I'd like to call to order the Town of Fairfax regular town council meeting. We're at the Fairfax Women's Club, 46th Park Road, Wednesday, September 4th. And it is about 7:03 PM. So with that, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Councilmember Reed. We just made it. So with that...
You're welcome.
Thank you. So Hannah, would you like to do a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Lacks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goddard.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
And Mayor Kohler.
Here, thank you. I'd like to report out that we had a special meeting in closed session. No items to report out of the closed session. I'd also like to have approval of the agenda and the affidavit of posting.
We don't make any changes yet.
Yeah, so moved.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, Council. Staff, I'd like to request we pull item number five. That's the EIR for Marinada Heights. The applicant has requested we continue it to the October 2nd meeting.
I'd like to amend that motion to approve the agenda and remove number five, continuing it to the October 2nd meeting.
Okay. Would somebody like to second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Frank, did you have something?
I did, I did. Actually, you know, from your meeting, it was reported in Marinada Heights back in January of this year that you were going to order an environmental impact report for the wall property. And now we are nine months since that time. And tonight, you're continuing the item at the request of the developer. So I guess the developer is making the decisions about whether or not you're going to have an EIR and when you're going to have it.
Okay, Frank, thank you. We'll be discussing that in October. So there's more than just the developer, but thank you very much.
Okay, you just had a motion and you didn't ask the public to comment on that motion. Thank you.
He can comment during open time.
Okay, you can comment during open time. Thank you. Appreciate that. So moving on, I'd like to read the meeting protocol, please. But before I start, I want to remind everybody, we've just had too many of these shootings. And so, again, Odessa, Texas, Midland, Texas, horrible mass shootings. And I want to remind all of us, I'm really happy to live in a town where everybody's engaged, but we do have to get a little perspective on the world. We live in this wonderful place that's so beautiful. And fortunately, we have not experienced this type of tragedy. So with that, I'd like to move on and read the meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place in the silent mode. The town council will review the agenda at 10 o'clock PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting. So before I read the announcements, we'd like to do a proclamation thanking and commanding the Fairfax Planning Commission for their dedication and hard work on a number of recent policy matters. So I will be coming down and asking members of the Planning Commission to come up. And I think there's several here. So typically, our Planning Commission works hard reviewing housing remodel applications, new housing applications. But in particular, the last two years, we've really tasked them with a lot of policy issues that have been really difficult. And I can say that they've made excellent recommendations to the council, and for various reasons, a number of those recommendations have been changed, which is the purview of the council. But the thought that they put in has really helped us make those decisions. Norma, come over here. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the Fairfax Planning Commission consists of seven Fairfax residents appointed by the town council to bring a broad variety of expertise and experience in reviewing planning applications, Fairfax ordinances, and the town general plan and housing element. And whereas the commission serves as an advisory body to the town council on planning policies and regulations. And whereas, over the last two years, 2018 and 2019 in particular, the commission has worked tirelessly on many difficult policy issues and provided excellent ordinances and recommendations to the town council. And whereas the commission spent numerous hours in meetings on cannabis, seven in 2018 and 2019, attempting to find a balance between the multitude of differing public opinions since Proposition 64 became law. And whereas the commission developed an ordinance allowing certain medical marijuana dispensaries to conduct adult-use delivery. And whereas the commission worked tirelessly and in the best interest of the community and its residents to help craft a small cell telecommunications ordinance to protect the interests of all Fairfax citizens while remaining in compliance with state and federal law. And whereas the commission crafted regulations to bring the maximum housing size into consistency for homes in Fairfax by introducing ordinance 832. And whereas the commission has reviewed and acted on planning issues that ran the gambit from house remodel applications to straightforward fence height variances and encroachment permits to matters with broader policy implications, such as developing and beginning implementation of a council-approved prioritized work program, including general plan elements, possible amendments to the zoning ordinance, and objective development standards. And whereas the Fairfax Planning Commission receives countless requests from Fairfax residents to review their private projects and stands unbendingly for the principles of good government and for environmental protection while applying maximum effort for residents to acquire the necessary approvals and conditions for their projects. And whereas the current members of the Fairfax Planning Commission are Cindy Swift, current chair, raise your hand, Philip Green, vice chair, who couldn't be here tonight, Mimi Newton, who was the former chair in 2018, Esther Gonzalez Parver, thank you Esther, and Norma Fregoso, Michelle Rodriguez, and Laura Curline, who could not be here tonight. And now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the town council of the Town of Fairfax, that the Planning Commission be commended and thanked for their many years of dedication, commitment, hard work, and exemplary service to the town and its citizens. Be it further proclaimed that the town council and staff declare that the Town of Fairfax is a better place because of the dedication and hard work of the Fairfax Planning Commission members have committed to our town. Thank you all. So I just wanted to thank the town council and staff for recognizing the hard work of my fellow planning commissioners. Each one brings their experience, their knowledge of the town, and their dedication to each and every meeting. And they work hard to serve the community they love. So thank you. Thank you. Now, moving on to announcements. Vacancies on boards and commissions. Applications are available at Town Hall and on the town website. For more information, contact the deputy town clerk or visit www.townoffairfax.org. The Climate Action Committee has up to two vacancies. The Open Space Committee has two vacancies. The Tree Committee has one vacancy. The Volunteer Committee has one vacancy. Parks and Recreation Commission has one vacancy. And then also to talk about the Fairfax Food Pantry, it's Saturdays, 9 to 11 at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are needed. And just want to highlight that there's plenty of volunteers in the morning. We're happy if anybody volunteers at any time. But if you can possibly come when they're closing up shop between 10:30 and 11, they usually only have a few people there, that would be great. And remind any of your friends who need food or are hungry. There's no need to show any ID. You don't have to be from Fairfax. You don't have to prove a need. Just go and take some food. And we're happy that our volunteers really started that process. So another event, Fairfax Open Space Committee Benefit Concert. This is our eighth annual benefit for the Fairfax Open Space Committee. It's this Saturday, September 7th, 2 to 5 PM in Perry Park. The Eleven, which is a Bay Area-based Grateful Dead cover band, will play again. And the event is free with donations to the Open Space Committee strongly encouraged. This is a zero-waste event, no alcohol in the park, and let's also refrain from other types of things, such as drugs or cannabis, which is not even allowed outdoors as per our smoking ordinance or Prop 64. Community Media Center of Marin, 10th Anniversary Block Party and Open House. So these are the folks that film our government meetings. They also put on our public and education channels. And I am a member of that board, and we are celebrating our 10th anniversary. That is Sunday, September 8th, 3 to 5 PM, 819 A Street in San Rafael. It's kind of across from the Little Kaiser downtown. There's a food truck. It's all free, live music, raffle, and more. Please come help us celebrate. And I want to mention that in our packet tonight, we put together a proclamation to honor CMCM for their 10 years. And just for those of you who don't know them, they are looked at as being one of the best in the nation for peg channels. So we're lucky to have them here in Marin. Townwide Picnic, Sunday, September 15th, 12 noon to 5 PM. Contratti Ball Field, sponsored by the Fairfax Volunteers. It's a great event for kids, families. Please come and help us enjoy the picnic. Art Walk, we have a lot of events this month. Friday, September 27th, 5 to 8 PM downtown. This is sponsored by our artists in residence. And some of you know that we have a collaborative of three artists. And so please come and help us. The Art Walk is really fun. So please come. Anybody else? Oh, Renee.
So just in case you thought that events end in September, October is coming fast around the bend. And on October 12th and 13th, we have a very festive weekend in Fairfax. On the 12th is Biketoberfest. That's MCBC's huge and very fun fundraiser. On October 12th evening, we will be screening a film called Motherlode, which is made by Liz Canning, a local filmmaker. And it is the history of the cargo bike movement. You see all these moms and dads, but let mom started it, riding around town with their kids on the back of their bikes, bags of groceries, all those good things. This is the history, and it is fabulous, and it's winning awards. And we get to see it on our very own ball field on October 12th. You'll have to look for when it gets dark on October 12th. We will keep you posted, the screening time. And on October 13th, it's Streets for People. So Streets for People is back. More information to come. This is an opportunity to spill into the streets and enjoy our public commons, enjoy our businesses, get free fun stuff, do art, dance, drum, do all that Fairfax kind of stuff. And I encourage everyone to just mark that weekend free for Fairfax. Farmer's Market through September 25th, please continue to support our Farmer's Market. This is all community, all the time. You can eat your dinner. You can get the best of fresh-grown, organic, local everything. Please support those farmers so they continue coming back and we can continue the tradition of the family-friendly Fairfax Farmer's Market. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just a quick announcement. I check the governor's website pretty frequently, and he's signing bills left and right. He just signed a bill called AB 273. And what that bill does is prohibit fur collection or killing animals for fur for recreation or commercial use. So that's pretty big for our state. So moving on, open time for public expression. To address the council on matters not on the agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address, which are optional. Depending on the number of speakers, individuals have two to three minutes to speak, four to five minutes if representing a group. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any unagendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So with that, first speaker.
The following is a letter I wrote to Mary Jane Burke, Assemblyman Levine, and Senator McGuire on Thursday, August 22nd. My name is Emmy Bergen, and I am a ninth grader at San Domingo in San Anselmo. I have come from a variety of different school backgrounds, a Spanish immersion public school, Manor Elementary, a Waldorf charter school, and I've homeschooled and now private school. It's been a journey for me to find what best suits my learning style. My little brother attends Ross Valley Charter in Fairfax. And on the first day of school, many of us saw the huge truck that drove up and down Sir Francis Drake. It said, "Charter's divide communities." This action is just cruel and hate-filled. These people have created fear and anger, and the saddest part is how it affects the kids. They should not have the right to make the children, our future, feel sad or scared when they go to school, a place where they feel happy and safe and where they will learn and how they can make a difference in the world and help solve big problems. Thank goodness that the community at RVC has the courage not to fight back, but to show these children to take the high road. The actions of a few small-minded people have damaged and caused strife in the community we love. Children were scared on their first day of school because part of their community hates on them when they didn't do anything except choose a school that best fits their style of learning. The next generation, my generation, has a lot of work to do. The world needs brave leaders who will collaborate and work together. It shouldn't matter what school anyone goes to, as long as they are getting a good education, one that works best for them. Different approaches to learning create different approaches in the world. We are a diverse world, and creating a diverse learning environment is a good thing. The situation that this vocal and fearful minority has unfortunately created is not okay, and we are saddened to start the year with this campaign of hate. My family and others, and the teachers at RVC, are trying everything we can to take the high road. But it would be nice if the powers that be would take some responsibility to help try to end this hate-filled behavior. In addition, the billboard that rolled down Sir Francis Drake Boulevard multiple times, the political and misleading anti-charter signs have been up for years, which is way beyond the town ordinance for such signs. My hope is that you, as leaders, can step in and help lead our community to a better place and to ensure that each and every child in Fairfax feels safe when they go to school, regardless of the choices their families make for their education. It would be the right thing to do for the kids. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Can I just quickly thank you, Emerson, for being so brave and for coming before us and for letting your community hear your thoughts and your feelings. Really important, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And Michael, go ahead. I actually gave you the wrong information, but go ahead and ask your question.
My name is Mike.
You need to push the red button.
Push the button. My name is Mike Bauernfeld, and I'm here on behalf of the petition filed by Hickory Road for repaving. And I understand that it is possible to get advanced on the agenda this evening. Out of 22 items, I believe we're number 22. And we have a large number of people here, and I was hoping that you might consider moving us forward.
Okay, and we'll discuss that after I close open time. So I should have brought it up earlier, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Jody Timms, Cascade Drive, and the town's representative to the Commission on Aging, with a quick update. The next Commission on Aging meeting is actually tomorrow at 10 o'clock. It's covering insights on Medicare and also the Hi-CAP program, which is a free counseling program for insurance issues. So if folks are interested in that at all, it will be at Pickleweed at Albert Borough Community Center tomorrow from 10 to 11. The Commission on Aging is also having on Friday our annual retreat. So we spend all day, together all 23 commissioners from the cities and the county, under the supervisors, to look at our agenda for the year. Age Friendly Fairfax, we have our monthly forum starting back up again. It will be next Friday, so it's now going to be the second Friday. And this one is on a subject of final arrangements, kind of getting that last duck in the row. So if that's something you would like to be doing some thinking about and some planning, whether or not you're interested in aid in dying, funeral services, celebrations of life after death. I heard an interview today on the radio about celebrations of life before you die. And we used to do that occasionally at the Redwoods. They're very, were very celebratory, very moving events. So something to consider. So that will be next Friday at the library from 1 to 2. Age Friendly Fairfax is also recruiting volunteers, both in town and at Drake, who can help older adults with yard clearing for fire prevention. So if you want to volunteer, or if you're aware of a neighbor, or older or otherwise, that might need support in the event of an evacuation, a need to shelter in place, or if the power is turned off by PG&E, please reach out to them. You can also contact your local firewise group or contact me through Age Friendly Fairfax via the town website. Breakfast with Friends will be September 18th at Barefoot Cafe, again this month, our third Wednesday. And in our classes, many of our classes have started back up that the rec department puts on, our ever-popular yoga classes, three or four times a week. There's a flyer in the back. We're making some changes to it because Sam Perry, who's always been a wonderful instructor for us, is not able to do any of his classes this fall. So storytelling and painting are not happening, and neither is improv, which got on the flyer by accident. But there are flyers in the back for that, too, as well as discounts, the senior discounts, the list of businesses in Fairfax that offer those discounts. So thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
John Fitzpatrick. I have a shop next to St. Rita's Church. And every day, almost every day, I walk into town, get a cup of coffee, and then walk to Perry Park. And the amount of cigarette butts that I see around the benches is kind of sickening. And I know all these butts end up in the bay. And I'm wondering if we could do something about that, like have an ashtray or something next to these benches. If you go by and look, you're going to see 30 cigarette butts around almost every bench. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
My name is Bridget Clark, and I just wanted to thank you for all the work you've done on the cannabis ordinance. I'm not staying tonight, but I did want to just make a quick announcement, since you're talking about events coming up. I've been wanting to tell you about the High Event, which is about the book that David and Nick Schef, our local residents, who were featured in Beautiful Boy. And this book is meant for middle school readers and families, anyone who wants to get more education on up-to-date information on drugs and alcohol. We're hosting, I've been helping organize to get them to speak. It's Wednesday, October 16th, at 7 PM at Dominican University in Angelica Hall. And the Eventbrite link is at marincommunityread.org. So I'd like to give you the flyer. I only have one. And I have a copy of the book. You're welcome to, maybe you could share it, or we could get you more if you'd like. So I just wanted to share this with you.
Thank you, Bridget. You can give those to our clerk, Hannah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Frank, did you want to speak in open time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Frank Egger, 13 Metaway. And this, my comments are in response to the mayor's proclamation, or two meetings ago, where you said that you announced that temporary signs, like Safe Fairfax signs, could only be up for 67 days. You did not disclose a legal opinion from the town attorney when you made that decision. So Safe Fairfax has obtained a legal opinion that your order is a violation of case law regarding First Amendment rights of Fairfax residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe it was an order. I think it was a statement, but thank you.
So you'll be seeing more Safe Fairfax signs going back up.
Hi, is this the appropriate time to say something about the ballot initiative for Fire Save Marin and the JPAs?
Well, I believe we're...
Or should I wait until after the presentation?
I think probably after the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak in open time? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to bring it back to the council. And I apologize, I gave Mr. Bauernfeld the wrong information. So he had asked very nicely if we could move the item 22. Now, I just want to point out that the town code says that these petitions are placed at the end of the agenda, but there is the ability to move them forward. I also want to point out that as far as my knowledge, we are the only town in Marin County that has such an opportunity, which I think is a great opportunity. And I'm sure Frank Egger had something to do with that when he was on the council. But I would, I think we have a lot of wide-ranging interests. So my suggestion to the council is we would move that after item 19, which is the Perry Park Place Structure Preliminary Design Concepts, because I think we may have some parents who are interested in that. So is, and I've explained to Mike that we can't move it that far forward, but we'll try to move it up a bit. So would somebody like to make a motion that we move item 22 after item 19?
Yes, so I move that change.
Okay, would somebody like to second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that measure passes. And folks who are here for Hickory Road, I can't tell you what time that'll be, but hopefully it won't be too long.
So before we enter into consent, I would like to ask staff, I'd like to ask our attorney to just come back with a brief report for us about the assertions of Mr. Egger about our sign ordinance. I would really like to clarify that for the record, because signs in this town have become a very, very divisive thing. I think it's really important that people understand what he's asserting and that we clarify this so that we can get back to a civil society.
And if I may, Mayor Frank, if you want to share your opinion with us, I'd be happy to see it, if it's in writing. Feel free to forward it to me.
Sure, I appreciate the opportunity. Our legal opinion has come from a nationwide First Amendment Coalition group. So when we receive your town attorney's opinion, we'll provide our opinion to you. Thank you very much.
And just one reminder, folks, that any type of sign is not allowed in the public right-of-ways. And that has been kind of a misunderstanding of folks. So regardless of free speech issues, the public right-of-ways are not available for signs. Okay, so let's move into the consent. Okay, so let's move into the consent calendar. And I would first ask the council if there's a question, or you feel very strongly about pulling an item, to bring that up now. I see none. Okay, I would then open it up to comment, if you have a comment, that's really a brief comment on an item, and I know Stan is here to talk on our proclamation number 15. So Stan, would you, thank you for coming yet again.
Yet again, and thank you yet again, the council and mayor, for declaring September Prostate Cancer Month. In Fairfax, and I just want to remind everybody, just take a minute or less, to remind everybody that like this year, the American Cancer Society is projecting 32,000 men in the United States dying, hundreds of those men in Marin, and the unnecessary deaths. So the thing to learn about prostate cancer is that early-stage, nearly 100% curable, has no symptoms. So when you get your yearly, or whenever you get your checkups and your cholesterol is measured, you just throw a PSA test in there, and there's other tests now to further define the PSA results. So then we're talking about nearly 100%. If you wait until there's pain, some kind of side effect, now we're talking about a 30% cure. So do that, beginning at age 45, or 40, if you're African-American, or you come from a family with either breast or prostate cancer, because they're very closely connected with something called the BRCA genes. And I've put a brochure out on the table with more information on prostate cancer, including information about a support group that I've been running for 18 years, every Tuesday night at Marin General Hospital, where you can come and learn yet more about prostate cancer. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stan, and Hannah, can you give Stan the original proclamation, please? Or get it to him?
We can do that later. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jody, did you have a comment on something on consent?
Just a quick encouragement to support the $80,000 for sidewalks, that's so important for us downtown, for older folks as well as everybody, we all trip and fall, so thank you, if you support that tonight.
Thank you. Frank, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you Frank Egger again. On item 7 and 8, on the issue of downtown sidewalks, at one time, the Fairfax Designer Review Board made the decision that we should have exposed aggregate sidewalks downtown, and the reason was, was it offered a more rural appearance to our downtown, rather than stark, bright concrete, which is a very urban appearance. And in past couple of years, we've been putting a lot of bright urban concrete downtown in the sidewalks. So I'm just wondering, who made the decision to change from exposed aggregate to, did the town council make that decision?
So one of the things we've learned is aggregate is much more expensive. The other issue with aggregate, it's much more expensive, is that it's not so smooth. And so one of the things we're trying to do is make our downtown more amenable for older adults, people with strollers, for everyone who walks downtown.
Well, if it's a light wash or light exposed aggregate, it's not too rough. That's number 7. Now, let me speak to number 8. You have a proposal to buy the bucket truck from San Anselmo.
Correct.
You already bought the bucket truck with San Anselmo, and I don't know if you know the history about that, but when we decided we wanted a bucket truck, we couldn't afford one. San Anselmo didn't think they could afford one, so we went together. We paid one-third of that bucket truck, and San Anselmo paid two-thirds of the bucket truck, and we've had access to it all these years. Now I see we're going to buy the bucket truck. So are we going to get credit for our one-third ownership of that bucket truck before we pay San Anselmo for it?
Well, thank you, Frank, that's why we need you with your institutional knowledge. Question for Garrett, we don't want to go back and forth on this item, but one issue is, should we remove this item and have you talk to San Anselmo? I know the bucket truck is quite a savings anyway.
So I would suggest, are we done with public comment, though, on a consent?
Oh, is there any more comment on consent? Seeing none, bring it back. Thank you, Garrett.
So with regard to the bucket truck, I'll just go talk to San Anselmo, and we'll work something out, but if you could just give me the authority to do this, if it turns out that they have different documentation. Obviously, none of their staff was there from whenever they did this, because the truck is 1994.
Yeah, and Frank, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, if you were around in 1994, I, you know, it's something that warrants looking at.
Okay.
So perhaps we should amend this to say not to exceed.
Well, let's not do that. I think what Garrett's saying is, he will talk to San Anselmo, remind them that we did pay for one-third of the bucket truck, and give him authority to go ahead, but we already know what the not-to-exceed price is, is what's on the agenda item. But we're hoping we can get a little bit of a bump on that, a little bump off.
I don't think it'll be an issue. What will happen is they'll research it, we'll research it, and we'll come up to something that seems to make the most sense when it comes to something like that.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry to bring us back, but there's a consent item, if we could look at consent item number 9, and it's the report back from the Chippier Day, the Chippier Days this summer. And I just wondered for clarification, Garrett, when you look at the comparison between Doc Edgar on the 13th and 14th in the Cascades, which collected 14.9 tons, MSS disposal cost being 14.28, and then you look at Deer Park, which generated 46.2 tons, their cost for disposal was 12.40, that doesn't match. So I wondered, what am I missing?
So the costs don't necessarily match, I think it just depends on what MSS, they donate most of it, it's just a matter of what they happen to charge based on an event. Because what happens is, on some of the days, like that Saturday, we're calling MSS to come out and drop off more bins, and so there's a lot more effort. And then some, there's more follow-up, we had more follow-up days for, which one am I looking at? Doc Egger, Cascade? We had some follow-ups, so it's not necessarily consistent, it's just what they believe is appropriate for that moment.
And the money that is in the contract for them, maybe they took that out of the Deer Park disposal days.
They actually, in their MSS agreement, they just pay us $10,000 a year for...
So maybe it came from there.
Right, so it kind of goes back and forth.
It's less cost, so this isn't a...
But mainly, they donate most of it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I also want to point out to the council, we have some supplements that are also in the back, that are minor changes to item 4, item 13, and item 16. And so with that, I would ask that we entertain a motion, but also give direction to staff in that motion for item 8 on the bucket truck. So would somebody like to make that motion? Peter, how about you?
Sure, I was about to anyways. Move to approve the consent calendar with the supplements to items 4, 13, and 15.
16.
I'm sorry, 16, and pulling item number 8.
No, we're not pulling it, we're giving direction to staff.
Well, direct staff to further investigate the possibility that we've already purchased a third of that, and report back to us on that item.
Okay, one friendly amendment, it's giving staff direction to go to San Anselmo and discuss that we purchased one-third, and to try to get a discount on that bucket truck.
Well, I'd like to hear back, actually.
Well, you can hear back, but you could hear back from the town manager, rather than at a council meeting, because we're giving them authority to move forward.
My motion is to have Garrett report back to us, and for perhaps a consent calendar next month.
Okay, would somebody...
I would second that.
I would concur.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Seeing none, that matter passes. So we're moving forward to presentations, and we have presentation on defensible space, fire inspections, Firewise Marin vegetation management activities, and Marin County Parks management activities. We have Chief Weber from Ross Valley Fire Department and County Fire, we have Todd Lando, Firewise Marin, and Jim Chaika from Marin County Parks. So thank you all for doing this presentation. I imagine a lot of folks are here to hear what you have to say. Here. Yeah, give the rest to the audience, pass these along, give the rest to the audience.
I gotta push the button. Good evening, Mayor, council members, thank you for having us. Jim and Todd are behind me, and will follow up. I'll just kick it off with the defensible space inspection program. You know, from my perspective, this was a wild success this year, and it really bridged the gap between the fear level and the educational level, and it was a consultative service where our inspectors were out, meeting and greeting with the public at their home, offering suggestions of how to not only harden the home and protect it from fire, but also create a defensible space around the home in an environmentally sensitive way. The feedback that I have had thus far has been very positive, didn't receive a single complaint, I don't know if any of you had, but I did receive many, many compliments from the inspectors that were out there. This is the first year we've really had a dedicated team, and not tried to use firefighters off-engine companies, and over the last four or five years, that has been a struggle, just because of the volume of activity statewide with fires. A little bit of data, areas completed or projected for the town of Fairfax include the Deer Park area, where we completed 352 inspections, Cascade Canyon, 460 inspections, Oak Manor, 80 inspections, Area Forest, Fairfax and San Anselmo, 636 inspections, and off of Tamalpais Road, 477 inspections. So a sizable number of inspections. This was year one of a three-year plan. You know, I would certainly recommend this approach, again, in the future. When we hear a little bit about the Wildland Fire Initiative, I think we'll hear a lot of that, you know, the work that was done here embedded into that and helped feed that plan. So I'm open to any questions that your council has, and then I'll turn it over to Todd and Jim from...
You know, it'd be great at some point if we could get those stats, and maybe we could put those on our website. Is this, those inspections are continuing until when?
So the inspections will end here in the next couple of weeks, so the end of September. We will have some additional staff that we're going to keep on hand, just because of the follow-ups and questions, we want to be responsive to those. You know, we have used all of the budget available, but again, I think that because we did this together collectively with the three towns and the county, we can leverage the fact that we can keep a couple people on for those follow-up pieces, which is great at no additional cost to the town.
Wonderful, so maybe when those are all complete, if we can get that information on the number of inspections done, and then I think we can, Garrett, can we find a place on our website to put that information, along with on Ross Valley, but it'd be nice for people just to focus on ours as well. Thank you so much, Chief Weber.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Well, first of all, when we walked through Cascade Canyon to talk to people about the evacuation drill, practice drill, I asked most people, so have the inspectors been here? And absolutely, straight across the board, people said, yes, it was very positive, and a good number said, we went out and just did it.
Yeah.
So that was a big shift. And the question I have is, so what do we tell people who didn't get their home inspected, and are wondering why, and when it's their turn, and what were the criteria by which you guys chose which homes, and things like that?
So excellent questions. We broke the towns and communities up in using our evacuation maps that we currently have, and we had to select areas, tried to be as equitable as possible. We looked at some of our highest priorities, also, where Firewise Communities has been established, and trying to prioritize and partner with that energy that's already there. So a lot of that information went into the decision process. It's never easy to select those that don't and don't have it, but our resources are limited, and we will be back in a rotation, and if anybody's specifically interested, I would ask them to reach out to me to find out when they're scheduled, assuming that this will be funded again, and we can move forward. You know, I think that one of the keys here is, this is a one-time-touch, educational-based, we're not getting the follow-up that we really should have, to reinforce that we've been there once, now we're asking you to do this a second time. And we had about a 55% compliance rate, so that means almost half of the homes are not compliant with the law. And so we have a lot of work to do, but I think that, again, we're taking this approach that we want to educate, but ultimately get to an enforcement component if we have non-compliance, and also offer grants and other things to help people work through some of those challenges.
So is it fair to say to those folks that, hey, you haven't been just skipped over, you will have your turn, or shall we not?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, the intention is 100% coverage in the town of Fairfax. It's going to take us three years to do that with the resources we have today, and that doesn't include follow-ups. But if somebody has a specific concern, they can reach out through our website, ask for an inspection, we'll schedule those as one-offs, just because we want to be proactive in this, but it'll be the engine company, probably not the inspectors doing it.
Okay, thank you.
And are we primarily, when you say all of Fairfax, are we looking at the wildlife, wildfire, urban interface zone, or all of Fairfax?
No, all of Fairfax. I mean, I, we have non-WOI areas, but I think that, as we saw with Coffee Park in Santa Rosa, we need to be inspecting everything.
Okay, great, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Peter.
If I may, Mayor, I'm just really, really glad that this is, inspection program, you know, kind of came into being this year especially. It was something I was very concerned about, and really was pushing for on our fire board, and I'm really grateful for the response, Chief, that you brought to make this happen and expand it as quickly as we could. And I'm also very grateful for my fellow members on the fire board to get behind us, and it's also good to see that it's sort of having a catalyzing effect for further inspections everywhere else. And I think it really is, as a public service, it's just an incredible bang for the buck, because I think the inspections are about $25 per house, which, to have that kind of expertise come out and have a, you know, customized recommendations for how to make your house safer, I think it's just a tremendous benefit for homeowners and for our residents. So just wanted to express my gratitude for really making this program, in its first year, expanded really, really effective.
Well, and I would say, and thank you, your council, for the leadership, for, you know, funds are limited, we understand that, and resources are tight, prioritizing this and supporting us, it's greatly appreciated. And again, I would offer, if anyone has any feedback, either the public or your council, please let us know.
John?
Yeah, and I just wanted to roll this into a nutshell, in case somebody's not really clear. Basically, somebody shows up at your house, who has expertise in, you know, fire safety, and you get a list of positive things that you can do, you know, just that particular limb, whatever it is, on your property, that you can do to make yourself and your neighbors a lot safer with fire. So that's, you know, it's informational, and it really helps, and I think that's why it's so much appreciated by the community and all of us here. I'm speaking from a member of the fire board, it's really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So who's up next?
Jim from Open Space.
Okay, so Jim, the last time I saw you, you were with the North Bay Conservation Corps. Congratulations on...
Thanks, yeah, it's been almost three years since then, but time has flown, for sure.
Congratulations.
But yeah, Madam Mayor, council members, and members of the public, thank you for the invitation today. I'm a superintendent with Marin County Parks, I coordinate and manage a lot of the fuels reduction activities on Marin County Parks and Open Space lands. And I'm joined by Todd Lando, who's the executive coordinator for Fire Safe Marin. Yeah, it's a privilege to present today, it was great to see some familiar faces in the audience, and also at the stage for all the folks that we have been partnering successfully with to make the community safer. So our goal today in coordinating with Garrett on this presentation was just to kind of give an overview of some of the activities that have taken place within and around the community, talk a little bit about, you know, what we've done in the past, and some of the current and future activities. Do you want to start with the grazing?
Again, I thank you for the invitation to speak, I'm Todd Lando, executive coordinator at Fire Safe Marin. In 2019, Fire Safe Marin, in conjunction with several other partners, three towns, San...
San Anselmo, Fairfax, the City of San Rafael, other agencies, Ross Valley Fire Department, Marin County Fire Department, Sleepy Hollow Fire Protection District, including Ross Valley School District, and several private landowners contracted with three herds of goats, 1,200 goats in total, to conduct a fuel reduction project in central Marin. We were able, over the course of about, about four months, graze nearly 500 acres of land in a 12-mile-long continuous swath that was strategically located to reduce vegetation fuels, to reduce the risk of fire in eight different communities that we counted, depending on how you looked at it. We wanted to highlight specifically one particular partnership that really showed how this program can work and how we can efficiently reduce vegetation fuels for wildfires. This is the town of Fairfax, what you see up here is part of the Cascade Drive Fuel Reduction Zone. This was a project that really started last year as a conversation between members of the town council and myself, the town manager, Fire Safe Marin, and local leaders in Firewise Communities, this case specifically the Cascade Firewise Community, with an interest in bringing goats into Fairfax as a fuel reduction tool and an education tool. We were able to pull this off with really, what I think was a minimum of effort. It was one of the smoothest projects from start to finish that I've dealt with. I want to thank the town council for your participation, the town, Marin County Parks and Open Space, and all of the landowners. And I really want to especially call out the Cascade Canyon Firewise Committee, and if she doesn't mind, Cindy Swift, who's in the back of the room, who was a leader in this committee and this project, making this happen. This included contacts with all of the landowners who this project would touch, which was more than 35 individual property owners, and County Parks and Open Space. This was a partnership that straddled public and private property lines to do work where it best fit the community and where it would provide the most protection for the entire community. A real model of a project, the kind of thing that we want to see more of in Marin. Fire Safe Marin is proud to have been a partner that helped bring it, bring this together, bring all of these groups together. That's really been our mission from the get-go. So we can see, one of the important things to note here, and I'll keep this quick, about 30 more seconds, we were able to use the goats to reduce light fuels, vegetation, grasses on the ground, and some of the shrubs on the ground, particularly poison oak. By reducing the amount of poison oak, what we've been able to do is open an area that's now available to hand crews, to people, to come in and do mechanical thinning, which is needed. The goats do not solve the fire problem on their own. They reduce some of the important vegetation fuels, but they also give access to these hand crews to come in and do additional work. Marin County Parks and Marin County Fire Department are leveraging their access to the Tamalpais Fire Crew, and we have 14-member fire crew right now working in these areas on Cascade Drive and Toyon Drive to reduce further vegetation, pick up the materials that the goats couldn't remove, to use chainsaws to limb trees, remove dead vegetation on the ground, and really create what will eventually be a model shaded fuel break for the entire community. And we did this with a contribution of about $25,000 from the town, more than $44,000 from County Parks and Open Space, which we leveraged because of the towns, helped getting this project launched, and then contributions from Fire Safe Marin as well. So thank you. Going to show you a couple, couple images here. These are the goats arriving at the Elliott Nature Preserve in Cascade Drive. You see Cindy there. That's Andre Saurus, the owner of Star Creek Land Stewards. This was 400 goats that arrived. They grazed, they started grazing at the end of Cascade Drive and moved all the way to the top of Toyon.
It's a short movie. I was just going to play it so we could see goats in action, but...
Yeah, it didn't go. The goats, the goats are really popular. People love them. They're fun to watch, and they do a tremendous amount of work, and they do work in dangerous areas that are too steep for people to access, or where there are things like poison oak that would prevent humans from doing the work. Almost had it. There we go. There's a look at what it looks like today. I'd really encourage people to take a walk out there and see the difference. It's dramatic and impressive, and we'll continue to improve over the next several years as we follow up, hopefully doing more and more of this.
So I just want to give an overview of some of the other activities that are happening in the broader Fairfax community to let people know how we're trying to help reduce fire, wildfire hazards. We just completed a successful project at the White Hill School. And again, Todd just mentioned the partnership that Marin County Parks and Marin County Fire Department developed just this past year. It's a cooperative agreement totaling $1.2 million to have a fire crew, a 14-person fire crew at our disposal, six months of each year, so July 1st to December 31st of this year, and also next year, to do projects all over the county. We use the same crew here at White Hill School to create 200 feet of defensible space on three acres of land, and it's, we understand the importance of this particular site. We know that access in and out of here is challenging on normal days, but especially in the case of emergency, this is likely a shelter-in-place location. So we really wanted to follow the prescriptions of the fire department, create as much defensible space as possible so that fire crews could, you know, protect that area in the case of a wildfire. So in addition to that project, there's also been additional grazing through community support in the areas of Canyon Village and Victory Village in the amount of 11 acres. So there's been a lot of activity in that area. This is the project, that's the back of White Hill School. This is the project as it was moving forward, just clearing a lot of dead and down material, limbing up, kind of spacing trees, creating kind of this shaded fuel break. That's a term you've heard from Todd and you'll likely hear in the future, just in terms of strategies and the types of defensible space you can create. So that's the crew in action, and this is what it looks like now. Definitely a big improvement from what was out there before, and really a successful partnership both with the school district, with the county fire department, with the local fire inspectors, with Todd, Fire Safe Marin, and everyone involved. So, you know, one more I just want to let people know about. Todd mentioned the Cascade Drive project. Well, I think this is sort of the bookend to that project in terms of the geographic locations of these two projects. So on the other side, on Toyon Drive, you know, that is an important fire road. It's a strategic, it's a strategic fire road in terms of access for fire equipment in the case of a wildfire. It's an area that our department has been maintaining for years, but it's one that we wanted to add additional resources to, to make it even more accessible, and also to kind of reduce the fuels in that area. So the TAM crew, while they're kind of bouncing between the Cascade Drive project, they're also working in this location to create additional, you know, defensible space around some of the homes in that area and to widen the corridor along that fire road. So I didn't really highlight this on the last page, but, you know, we're really running with that initial investment that the town gave for work, you know, in Cascade Canyon, and we're trying to just spread resources all throughout the community, and this project costs about another $27,000 to get off the ground. And that's the end of our slides, and we'd be happy to take questions.
Renee?
Yeah, thank you so much, gentlemen. I was wondering if you could help clarify for people who may think that this is a one-year, we're done kind of thing. How long will it take to actually get this broom under control and get it to a point where, where it actually is in perpetuity under control? I think there's a misunderstanding around that.
I think I know what you're getting at, and that is, well, broom, I know there's some volunteers in here that pull broom all the time, and that's something that doesn't really go away. Vegetation management is a 365-day and every-year project. It just grows back. And knowing this community's preference and many communities throughout the county for not using, you know, chemical alternatives that which would prevent the regrowth of these things, it's something that labor and people need to go out and do every single year. So it's not a one-and-done project, although I think the initial capital investment, I guess is the way I would phrase some of these initial projects and really sort of widespread clearing, is that we hope that the heavy lifting is something that we can do once and that with minimal resources and maintenance through partnerships, through grants, through just sort of leveraging multiple sources of revenue, that we can just have minimal investments in the maintenance of those facilities going forward.
So how many years do the goats have to come back in order to not have to have them come back every year?
I would say that what we're looking at is 96 years of deferred maintenance. The last major wildfire to burn through this part of Fairfax was 1923. It's the biggest wildfire we know of in Marin's history. So we, 96 years of deferred maintenance. Mother Nature maintained this land with wildfires. That was the natural way of doing it. We don't allow wildfires anymore. We can thank Chief Weber for that, you know, and the fire departments have been spectacularly successful. So to replace the maintenance that was deferred for so long and to restore the land to a landscape that's easier to maintain and more natural, we think is probably a three-to-five year process with goat grazing, but that doesn't mean we're done in three to five years. We're going to have to do ongoing maintenance of some variety as long as people choose to live here. But the intensive work, the chainsaw work, the goat grazing, which is a little more intensive than sheep grazing, which we think we'll eventually transition to, is probably three to five years. It's somewhat dependent on the landscape.
So Todd, maybe one of the things you could mention is, I know that Marin County has the highest number of Firewise Communities, and I believe Fairfax is the highest. Maybe you could just mention the number that are certified and name them out? Because I think there's a new one.
There is. I think the whole council lives in various Firewise sites at this point. So in the town of Fairfax, Cascade Canyon was the first recognized Firewise USA site. Manor Hill is recognized. Deer Park was recognized in June of this year. Forest Avenue was recognized in July of this year. And just earlier this week, on Tuesday, Canyon Village was recognized at the far west end of Fairfax is our newest Firewise site. We anticipate that the Meadowlands of Marin on Glenn Drive and Shamrin Court will be recognized this year as well at Miranda Neighborhood. And there are one or two others that we're given nudges to that we're hoping will follow through on the process this year as well. So that will make Fairfax the number-one city in Marin for Firewise sites by the end of the year.
Thank you. Jim, did you have something to add?
No, I'm just on standby for questions.
Okay, so any council members have questions? So with that, I'll open up to the public who may have questions. And Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. I can address some of the questions you'll probably be looking forward that Renee asked because I brought about 412 sheep and goats to my property in 2004. And although that was good for some of the low-hanging brush, as the trees grow and the brush replaces itself, it was a temporary fix. I have found that manually pulling out the broom, so in the last 17 years, this last year and one year prior, I didn't have people manually pulling all the broom throughout my property. That has made the biggest difference. When I originally bought the property, it was covered with broom, so I had a very small meadow, but as I expanded that to all the property to remove broom, it was quickly replaced with Italian thistle. The Italian thistle has probably been more prevalent and even crowding out some of the broom than the broom. So when you take out one of these invasive species, you'll see somebody else replace. And if there is a way to continually do this, I'd love to hear it. But I have found that after I take out the larger broom, because I had some broom originally like 12 feet tall, once I took out my larger broom, so it's smaller, if you also mechanically mow it right at the beginning of the dry spell of the summer, it does seem to help kill it. I have been told that the seeds can germinate, remain dormant for in excess of 50 years. So this isn't a couple-year process to get rid of the broom. The Italian thistle, which I didn't have much, if any, on my property, we eradicated the star thistle very easily, but the Italian thistle, that's just been prolific. It's almost come up like grass at different places, generally around a softer soil, like around woodchips and things like that. So it'll be a long project.
Thank you, Michael. Would anyone else like to come up and comment on this presentation? Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. You know, we're making a really good headway, and it was, it was quite a realization for, I think, folks in town when they saw that map come out that shows Fairfax number 13 as far as at-risk communities here in the North Bay, and our fire service is making a great effort. A couple of things we need. We still need voiceover commands for our emergency sirens, and we need some automatic generation for the sirens when electricity is shut off, either by PG&E or just goes down because of the fire. That's number one. And I've been saying we need evacuation signs in high-risk areas and a solar power for nighttime evacuations because of the big fires, the campfire and the tubs fire, most of those evacuations, they were trying to get out at nighttime, and it's really difficult under circumstances when you've got engines coming in, you've got smoke and you're trying to evacuate, and you're in the middle of the night, you don't know kind of where you are. And then third is Fairfax roadway clearance. You know, we have a 12-foot, an ordinance that requires 12-foot of clearance in our streets. I'm not, I think it's probably time to revisit the 12-foot. At times, you could barely get a pickup through two cars parked. And, you know, enforcement is an issue, is a key issue. And also, if we're trying to evacuate and the streets are clogged with cars that don't, that shouldn't be there, engines coming in and folks trying to get out is going to be almost impossible. So we need to talk about better enforcing of our, enforcement of our clearance laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Those are good points. And ma'am, I think you wanted to speak earlier.
I'm the Firewise Leader of Forest Avenue Site.
Thank you.
And you're welcome. I just want to say...
Want to give your name?
Oh, Mary Fleming.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, we're getting terrific support from Fire Safe Marin, and I hope that the town of Fairfax really supports Fire Safe Marin so they can handle the bigger things that we as neighborhoods cannot handle, like the fuel breaks and whatnot.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anybody else want to speak on this item? Well, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Any last, before you go ahead on the next item, any last comments or it's fine? Okay, I want to thank all three of you, and in particular Todd, who I think you finally have someone to help you, but you have been probably doing everything in this county for, I don't know how you have the time. And then Jason Weber, thank you for joining our Ross Valley Fire Chiefs. This is one of the most accessible men you will ever find. He's texting me on Sunday, in response to my texts. And Jim, thank you for all your work on Marin County Open Space. So with that, we're going to move on to our next item, which is a presentation on the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. And again, we're looking at Chief Weber of our Marin County Fire Department. Chief Weber wears two hats.
A few hats. Whoa, that's loud, sorry.
And loud hats.
And I'll get started here. Usually I have all kinds of people to help me with technical support, but we have multiple presentations across councils tonight, so they left me alone, which is always dangerous. I'll do my best to start here, though.
Well, if you have problems, Garrett just walked out of the room, and he's usually the technical support. Uh-oh. Maybe Todd can help. That's a, that's a movie. That's what that is.
Wildfires are bigger, burn longer, cause more damage, and kill more people than ever before. During the fire siege of 2017, when our friends to the north experienced that disaster, Marin was just one ignition source away from that occurring. We have the same fuel conditions, same weather, and same topography that drove that fire that night.
Wildfire risk is now a constant threat in California, especially in communities like Marin with lush vegetation and development near significant areas of natural open space. Marin's natural beauty and abundant undeveloped lands are considered source fuel for a potentially devastating and fatal wildfire, similar to the ones that have ravaged Sonoma, Napa, Lake Counties, and Paradise over the past few years. Many Marin neighborhoods are adjacent to wildlands because of a strong desire to live close to nature. Recent fire seasons have been longer, hotter, and among the deadliest and most destructive on record. The 260,000 residents of Marin receive fire protection and emergency response services from 19... from 19 separate cities, towns, fire districts, and the county. But there is no single agency responsible for coordinating wildfire prevention.
The threat of large destructive wildfires in Marin is real, and one of the most important lessons is that a fast-moving wildfire doesn't care about jurisdictional boundaries, but a coordinated, large-scale effort to improve prevention and safety can make a difference, can save lives and property.
In response to the need for coordinated action to reduce wildfire risk in Marin, local fire agencies and municipal governments have proposed creation of a new joint powers authority, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. The new authority's mission would be to improve and oversee programs in early wildfire detection, improved alert and warning systems, resident evacuations, vegetation management, and fire hazard reduction, defensible space property evaluations, educating the public about wildfire safety, and more.
This new fire prevention and mitigation program is designed to be in addition to, not in replacement, of the current fire prevention efforts currently in place in our Marin communities. The program is designed to bring all of Marin neighborhoods up to a defensible space standard to minimize loss from large damaging wildfires while also allowing flexibility to address local needs. For example, some communities have local fire issues related to the need for improved fire patrols, road widening, increasing the vegetation removal along critical evacuation routes.
Some local community issues that can be addressed, for one, is improving your primary and secondary evacuation routes from your neighborhood. Many communities within Marin only have one way in and one way out. How we improve that is by removing hazardous vegetation that's located along the roadsides. A second issue to address would be improved defensible space inspection program. How that is involved is by allowing a cadre of inspectors to come into our community and to be able to consistently inspect every single property and give recommendations on how you can prepare your home to become more fire safe.
Currently, no dedicated source of funding exists for wildfire prevention and preparedness in Marin. Options for securing a dedicated funding source are being evaluated, including placing a local funding measure on the ballot in 2020 for voters to consider. It is estimated that approximately $20 million per year is needed to implement an effective coordinated wildfire prevention program.
We've been lucky to avoid a major wildfire in Marin County, but luck is not a strategy. We need a good plan to make ourselves safer. Research and just plain common sense point out the need to have a coordinated countywide wildfire prevention effort. It's been a long time coming, but I'm very excited to see all this come together.
In the coming months, cities, towns, and local fire agencies will have the opportunity to join the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and decisions will be made about securing dedicated funding for the authority's programs. To stay informed, please visit www.marinwildfire.org.
I always say I have a face for radio. Don't like to see yourself up there. So thank you. That video was put together to kind of summarize a lot of what's happening. You know, I think as we heard tonight, there's a lot of work being done, and we're just barely moving the needle. And that's frustrating for all of us as policymakers, as fire chiefs, fire professionals, city leaders. We know we need to do more. We're hearing from the public. We want to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on this, and that's really what this is about. You know, it mentions 19 local fire agencies, but as you know, Ross Valley Fire is four agencies in one as a JPA, so it sounds like a very large number. There used to be 36 fire agencies in this county. We're really down to about 12 total, and there's a lot of work being done collaboratively. The fire agencies in Marin are really here for the response to incidents. We're staffed that way, that's how we've always been staffed. It's to respond to a fire, a cardiac arrest, a medical, a car accident. It isn't necessarily and was never intended to be doing a lot of this pre-fire work. And we heard what Todd mentioned, that, you know, we've got 100-plus years here, around 100 years, of the interruption of natural fire on the landscape. How do we do this in an environmentally sensitive way that leaves us in a safer place? We all love living here, we love being here, we want to protect this. There's really three primary goals that we're looking at with this initiative at the most basic level. It's to get people out alive. The second piece is to protect their homes from fire. And then the third is to create a landscape that is tolerant to fire, where you have lower intensity fires. And when we have 100 years of fuel built up, deadened down material on the ground, those aren't natural fires anymore. They really nuke the land, if you will. This is an example from the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, a data-driven document that was adopted in 2016. This is your average hot day in the fall. This isn't under a significant wind event. And the colors indicate the flame length, average flame length. And when we talk about that, firefighters are effective in initial attack or fighting a fire in that green area. We can use our tools that we have on the engine to do a hose lay, go direct to the fire. When you get above eight feet, you're looking at needing to go indirect, so that means coming up to a ridge top, you know, finding a road that you can defend from, using bulldozers and aircraft. People become less effective as the flame lengths get higher and higher. So this gives you an idea of what the landscape looks like in Marin County. A little bit about insurance losses. We've seen a lot of this in the county. There's been an enormous amount of insurance losses, either people not being able to get renews or buying new property and not being able to get a company to insure it. They're having to go to the California Fair Plan and then buy regular insurance on the market for everything else. That's exponentially more expensive than what most people are paying on average. I've heard some people say that they were not renewed, and they're spending now $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 more a year for fire insurance here in this county. So I think one of the goals is also to slow that pace or stop it. How do we prove to the insurance companies that we're doing more in this county and making an investment, a modest investment, so we don't get hit and end up paying the insurance companies? The insurance companies are a challenge to deal with, because we'd like hard data to work from them. If we do X, what is the return on that investment? They're not really willing to share that information. That's their business model. But, you know, I do feel that moving the needle will substantially reduce the losses and/or the increases in the county, and ultimately save all of our constituents money in that regard. And this, again, just shows you kind of what we've been looking at to the tune of billions in California alone over the last several years. So some of the planning and analysis that's been done. As I mentioned, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan was adopted in 2016. We really use data to drive our decisions. What is our real fire problem? Where are risks and threats? And what is it going to take to start to mitigate those? That is our framework and really our guiding document today. Annually, we report out on the accomplishments and also add work plan, add work to the plan. In 2018, after the North Bay Fire Siege, the Board of Supervisors commissioned a study to look at lessons learned from the North Bay. What worked well up there, what didn't? What mistakes were made? What didn't happen that should have happened? We were able to bring down fire and law enforcement and land management professionals from Sonoma County, Napa County, and ask them in a very candid manner, what would you have done differently, or what would you wish you would have done to change the outcome of that? We took that information, looked at ourselves in a tough way, and said, where are gaps? What gaps exist in this county and what needs to be done? Some were able to make really quick adjustments with one-time money. We've invested a lot of other, either, you know, fund, local funds or other things to try to move the needle in certain ways, but we still have some pretty major gaps that exist there, based on the feedback from our partners to the north. And then 2019, the Civil Grand Jury, wildfire preparedness, the creation of, recommended the creation of a joint powers authority to deal with this. And I, you know, I feel strongly that doing this together is better for a lot of different reasons. I know, I think we all worry that we would have another bloated JPA with more government, and we don't need that. We have really tried to engineer, and I'll talk a little bit about it, how we keep this boots and hooves on the ground working and limit any overhead costs. There's a lot of things we can capitalize on doing it together. Everybody going out and doing it independently is competing for the same resources, but if we can share those strategically and do work that goes beyond our boundaries, whether it be a jurisdictional boundary, a fire district boundary, a public land agency's boundary, and do it together, we can be more effective and more strategic in our approach. So talking about the, as the video mentioned, the creation of a JPA, you know, with local fire agencies, cities, towns, and the county working together collaboratively at this issue. A little bit about the program. So we've essentially broken the program areas down into three sections. One is the core area. So this is the majority of the funding, and it's also the greatest amount of work. The detection, evacuation, and program improvements. I heard comments about alerting systems. There's no one-size-fits-all, but we're too darn reliant on those cell phones to make notifications, and they, you know, they failed miserably multiple times in multiple events. Sirens are not a fix-all. They're hard to hear, often in homes that are designed with dual-pane windows to hear. There's weather alert radios that they use in the Midwest for tornadoes. We're looking into how we can use those effectively. They're like $30 on Amazon. They can send an alert tone in your home, potentially wake you up, and send a message over that. It's those kind of technologies and that change that we need to be prepared and be able to implement and move into the residents here in the county in Fairfax. Grants. We know we have an aging community. We know this work can be expensive and physical. How do we help those that can't help themselves? How do we have resources available to make sure that their property is safe so it doesn't affect your property? Also, how do we aggressively pursue state and federal grants? We will be more successful as a collaborative unit attempting to get state and federal grants than we are independently on our own and competing against each other. And then public education. I think I heard it multiple times. Poor Todd is worn out. We have completely exhausted Todd and Fire Safe Marin. Fire Safe Marin is leading the nation in the creation of Firewise communities, and they're doing this on a shoestring budget with not enough resources. Bottom line, they don't have the resources to do it, and they can be more effective oftentimes as a non-governmental agency doing that work than we can. They're a great partner, and we have to support them. The second bucket, defensible space evaluations, home hardening. This is that piece that I've talked a little bit about, and that it's so important. 51% of the land in Marin County is private. It's pretty amazing that the other 49 is protected, but that means that we've got a lot of work to do on private property. It has to be environmentally sensitive. It has to be sustainable. How do we do it where we're not increasing greenhouse gases? How do we get rid of that material in a manner that makes sense environmentally? How do we educate people that you don't have to clearcut all your trees down to be successful? All of that has to be FaceTime, in my opinion. We are unsuccessful doing it by sending a mailer. It's that FaceTime when we go out there and have somebody walk you through your property and explain it. You know, we need to work with our environmental partners and stewards, our master gardeners, looking for plants that not only are drought resistant, but also, you know, are good pollinators. There's a lot to consider in this, and you can't do it with a postcard. The last bucket is local prevention mitigation issues. So, you know, I heard Fairfax in that data analysis thing, it was Streetlight that did the work, 13th, you know, rated 13th for challenging evacuation. We know we have a problem here with evacuations. These homes were all summer cabins at one point, that were horse and buggy was used to get to them. Now they have four kids that all drive, that all have cars, that are parked out there. We get it. How do we work with our community to make sure that we can get in and out? How can we have orderly evacuations? We don't have the resources now to mitigate that in a timely manner. So a little bit about some of these areas. You know, we talked about the wildfire detection improvements to the warning systems. You know, there's technology changes rapidly, and it's expensive. How do we stay up with that? I'm not going to beat this because I covered a lot. This is usually not my section either, so I don't want to ramble. I apologize. Coordinated vegetation management. I talked about being strategic, you know, reducing our fuel loads. I think Council Member Goddard mentioned, you know, how often do you have to go back? It's typically five to seven years that we have to go back and retreat something. We have to treat these as capital projects. If we treat them as one-offs, broom will be right back into it, invasive species. We've proven with Marin County Open Space District and municipal water, we can do quality projects, but they're capital investments. That means we have to go back and touch them every few years. And adding prescriptive fire back to the landscape again. How do we do this with natural fire, low-level, low-intensity fire on a larger level in our watershed? We all rely on that watershed as a very important resource for drinking water. How do we keep it safe? How do we help the water district keep that? How do we add more prescribed fire to it that was here for many years? And again, doing it in environmentally sound way. Covered those. Here's an example of a project in Sleepy Hollow Fire District, Terre Linda area. This had multiple effects for the communities of Fairfax, Oak Manor, Sleepy Hollow, and Santa Fe. These are the kind of projects we're looking at implementing that have multiple community benefits, where you don't worry about whose property it is or what community it's protecting. You look at it holistically and say, how do we approach this in a manner that's most effective for protecting this, these communities? Because sometimes wind's coming from the west, sometimes it's coming from the east. An example also, this was a $600,000 project for about 60 acres in lighter fuels. If you saw some of the numbers that were up there, fuel reduction work is very expensive. And when we see that number of $20 million, it takes me back. It's a lot of money, but when you look at a grant that we received recently for 55 miles of treatment of our roadways through the Ross Valley, including Fairfax, it's about $18,000 a road mile, and that means you're touching it one time. All of that's going to grow back. That gives you an idea of the magnitude and the cost of these projects and some of the challenges we have. We talked a lot about Fire Safe Marin. I won't cover it more. It's such an important resource for us here in this county, and the Firewise communities, again, are such an integral part of bringing our communities together and doing this as a private-public partnership. Government cannot solve this problem alone. We talked about the need for the defensible space evaluations and some of the work being done there. Also, a dedicated abatement program. And we have that lot that, you know, goes to an attorney in New York on a trust that we can't get a hold of anybody, and it's driving the neighbors absolutely crazy. We're all aware of those. Having an ability to go in and do an abatement, clear the land to protect the neighbors, and then, and put that on their tax bill when they're, when they're just completely ignoring us, this will give us the opportunity to share those resources countywide, where we have one we're dealing with right now. We expect it'll take 40 staff hours to deal with one abatement. That's just not practical. We talked about some of the local needs. So, you know, part of this, and we talked about the buckets, is returning, you know, 20% that really gives discretionary use to your local fire agency. In this case, I would love to see Fairfax look at parking boxes on some of these streets to, so we know where we can park so we can get an engine through. Those are the kind of things that local funds could be used for. They could accelerate a vegetation management project that's super important for that community. We talked about the total, the total project costs annually, having a stable source of locally-controlled funding. If you recall, the state SRA fee, when CalFire placed a SRA fee, it was like, at this point, it would be about $178. Almost all of that money was leaving the county and going to the state. We didn't see the return on investment. This money means every dollar will be spent in this county and locally. Supplementing, not supplanting, existing funds. Countywide tax measures, what we're looking at for the March of 2020 election, assuming that the council's comfortable with those recommendations, would require two-thirds support countywide. And I'll talk about the survey results and where we think the public is at and why we're having these community conversations. Again, ongoing versus one-time funding, and having a funding stream that can, you know, we can adapt and change as our climate is changing, as conditions change in the county, and being responsive to that. Talked a little bit about the buckets earlier. I won't drown you in more detail, but really it's 12 million, 4 million, and 4 million respectively, roughly generated out of the Fairfax area. The estimate's around a half a million dollars, $500,000 annually. So that local bucket would look like about 100,000. There'd be $100,000 worth of investment that the agency could choose to do their own inspections or use the JPA as a pooled resource for seasonal inspectors, similar to the model that we're using now. using now. And then, of course, access to the funds available on the core area, which means that we would collectively pull our resources and geographically prioritize projects, but not necessarily, you know, draw a line at the Fairfax-Stanisimo border because, darn it, that's the community line. We stop there. It's really to look at things on a more holistic level. It also gives us the ability to share heavy equipment, masticators, mulchers, chippers, things that we don't all need to go out and buy our own. I mentioned the polling results. So, one of the first questions we had to ask, we felt as fire professionals, as leaders in the community, we're hearing a lot of input from the community. They wanted more done. We understood that our resources were limited, and that we had to ask, is this something for a modest increase in annual taxes that the community's willing to pay for, for this level of service? So, the first step was we had to poll, because we wouldn't be having these community conversations if it polled at 25%. But again, these are pretty staggering from Godby, who does a lot of polling research, to see these kind of numbers. It really indicated that there was a community desire to pay a modest amount of money for an increased level of safety. So, we polled three items: up to 11 cents per square foot, $178 per parcel, and a quarter cent sales tax. This gives you the countywide results. Excuse me. The countywide results, and... Sorry. Thank you. I got it right here.
We have water.
Yeah, that's it. I got a drink in here. I'm kidding. My four kids started school this week and brought home a cold. Never fails. So, the two-thirds line gives you an idea of what would be potentially passing. The 11 cents per square foot by far did best at about 74% support countywide, followed by the parcel tax, and then, we didn't reach the threshold for two-thirds on a quarter cent sales tax. So, a little snapshot of Ross Valley. If we got down just to Fairfax, the margin error would be too high, so we're using the Ross Valley. And you can see that almost 80% support in the Ross Valley for a square footage assessment, and then, doesn't quite reach the threshold for the $178 parcel. And again, the quarter cent sales tax doesn't meet the threshold either. So, some of the mandatory fiscal accountability pieces. All funds must stay local and cannot be taken by the state. Funds must be used for wildfire prevention and cannot be diverted. Independent oversight, annual reporting of financials and annual audits. And I would add to that, annual reports. So, a look back and a look forward with metrics that are challenging us to make sure that we're meeting the objectives of the initiative. Exemptions for low-income seniors, and then again, you know, help leverage our local funds to attract state and federal grants. So, 19 agencies. How do you create a JPA with 19 agencies and try to create equity amongst the voting? Look at it from a geographical perspective. You know, I think one of the goals was really to try to force consensus. How do we bring everybody to the table, ensure their local needs are met, but also work collaboratively together on this? This is, to me, this is like world peace. There shouldn't be any fighting here. We want to make our communities safer, and how do we do that with the best form of government? So, what we've done or are proposing is breaking the county into five geographical areas, and this really is, the intention of this is for operational purposes. So, you've got the shaded green area, I guess that's green to the right, Nevada Fire District, essentially. The red area is Marinwood, Santa Fe, and the county service areas that are scattered throughout that. This purple area is the Ross Valley, and if you're familiar with Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, it's the same layout. It's quarter meter to Fairfax. The green area being the Southern Marin Zone, and then, the west. And when you look at that west, it looks awfully big, but a good portion of the majority of that is National Park Service land, about 140,000 acres. So, we went back and forth with a lot of potential models on governance and landed on two representatives from each of the five geographical areas. This roughly balances with population, size, needs, and then, one for small districts. So, we've got all these little scattered small districts, Muir Beach, Stinson, Inverness, Marinwood, Kenfield. Put them together as kind of an 11th vote, if you will. And I'll talk a little bit about the structure of what we're proposing for. Now, this would be an 11-member elected board. So, our elected officials in this county set policy. I recommend policy as a public official, but ultimately, our elected officials set policy. So, felt strongly that was the appropriate group to have at the top. That would be two from each of the zones. The proposed concept is, since Ross Valley Fire Department is a JPA with four member agencies, then elected would be from one of those four agencies, and then, Central Marin Fire would have another elected from one of those two agencies, and Kenfield would be in the small districts. So, if we can wrap our head around this a little bit, I know I may be breezing over this. Then, the operations or budget committee would really be staff level. So, that's people like me, people like Garrett. We finalize and put packages together for our policymakers to consider. The advisory level down at the bottom is a subject matter expert from each of the 19 agencies, and this is where we bring in our land management agencies also. It's critical that they're part of the conversation, so we're collaborating and working together. This is also where we bring PG&E. If PG&E's doing a large-scale vegetation management project around infrastructure in Fairfax, let's capitalize on that. Let's do work together. If it means a moderate investment for us with them, because they're already doing the work in the area, we can capitalize on that. This is where we bring our law enforcement partners to the table to talk about effective evacuations and how we do that better. Office of Emergency Services and other members. This is where our environmental community can come in and give their expertise on how we can do it better than we're doing it now. So, that's the advisory committee. And then, our little fellow here looking down is the Citizen Oversight Committee. We want to be transparent through this process. We want to create a JPA that's working for the people, and there's been a lot of input, rightfully so, that we have some oversight on this that looks at our work plans, looks at our budget, looks at our expenses, and makes sure it's in alignment with what was proposed. And since all of these videos are recorded, they can go back and look at me and say, Jason, you said this, and hold me accountable. Why the JPA? I think we talked about that. Why the $20 million? I've given you multiple examples. I still can't wrap my head around the fact that things cost so much. That's me personally, but, you know, we've given you multiple examples of why we think it's going to take $20 million to do this countywide. And we've talked about how the land management agencies participate collaboratively with us in this. A little bit about timelines and next steps. So, right now, we're in the informational phase. We're out gathering information, getting input from you, the council, our community members, until about mid-September. And then, towards the end of September and October, we'll be going back to the 19-member agencies, looking for them to sign on to the JPA and pass a resolution, ultimately placing it on a countywide ballot. And then, November, the Board of Supervisors would take those resolutions and then ask that it be placed on a March of 2020 ballot, of course, at the request of the councils and after their input. And then, March of 2020 is what we're shooting for timeline-wise. So, I would open it up to your council for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for the chief? No, we're asking the council first, and then, I'll open it up for the public.
Yeah, I just had a comment on the budget. I mean, you get what you pay for, but you also got to pay for what you need. And this year, I've kind of, we've been doing, we did the inspection program somewhat ad hoc. We took $50,000 from our own reserves, our own town budget, to do the project inspection program. So, it would be great to be able to double that, and you were talking about $100,000. So, just an idea of how much we could expand the inspections. And also, on our budget, on our agenda tonight, we spent approximately $75,000 to do the chipper days, which is great. It's a great community effort, and, but it is very ad hoc, so we really do need a coordinated, integrated, consistent, well-funded source to do these very important things that are really kind of beyond the scope of our town's resources and expertise. So, I would really welcome having these very important tasks, plus coordinated evacuation routes, maintaining coordinated evacuation routes, and doing the necessary clearance so that our evacuation routes aren't fire traps. And it's beyond what every little town can do on itself, so I'm really glad to see that this is being contemplated, and I would really support that.
Thank you, Peter. Renee?
I just want to make sure that before we finish, that the public is clear how it is that they would make comments considering the timeframe by mid-September, wanting to move this forward. So, how would the public voice their comments and considerations?
Great question. We've created the MarinWildfire.org website. We have the draft JPA on there. It is rapidly moving and changing as we get inputs, but that is a document that people could look at and make comments to us. You know, people that are comfortable getting up and speaking tonight, we're taking those notes collectively. I can be contacted directly, and I'll give you my telephone number. It's 415-473-4100. If you don't feel comfortable speaking tonight, I'm happy to dive deeper. And do understand that we're flying at about 30,000 feet. You know, there's a lot of detail behind all of this, and we certainly would appreciate any input.
John, did you have a comment?
Yeah.
Or a question?
Yeah, I did. Well, great presentation, and, you know, it takes a while, but it's an important subject, obviously. And you briefly touched on how people's insurance rates are tripling in many cases. There are people, you know, I've heard stories from people, they couldn't get it at all, and they had no insurance for a period of time, then they finally got some, and they were really happy to pay four times as much as they were the previous year. I know you said it was a black box what the insurance company's thinkings are, but I think we can look at some of those examples and have an effort been made to kind of look at a model of how much these increases are going up across the board. And it could be, actually, by participating in this countywide effort, that people's insurance rates will increase at a much lower rate, and so, it'll actually be a bargain. You know, they'll pay less overall by voting for something like this, and I'm wondering how much effort has been gone into that.
So, John, Christie's going to yell at me if we're not following my speaker notes that she gives me, because there was information in there on that.
That's her job to yell at you a little bit.
Yeah, no, it's, so our non-renewals in California increased by 6% last year, or 88,000 homes. 79,000 homes were dropped from insurance, coverage increasing 50% more in the higher-risk zones. And 340,000 were dropped in rural areas in the last four years. So, we can see the number's substantial. Also, those impacted by the North Bay fires, 74% were underinsured, and looking at $500 on average cost per square foot to rebuild, which in Marin would probably, and today, would probably be $600-plus dollars per square foot. So, it's pretty substantial, and there are some insurance companies that are giving discounts for firewise communities, recognizing they're doing more. I think it's USAA, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it is USAA.
And I think others will follow, recognizing that if we're moving the dial and the needle substantially, but I can't promise that, and the insurance companies hold these kind of secrets close to them. But I certainly hope they would recognize this and do like you're speaking of and give our community a break.
Yeah, I think it's important to articulate.
Thank you, John. Go ahead, Bruce.
Just want to thank you for this, for the presentation, and I think it's a good step to take.
Just a question for the chief. Thank you, Bruce. One of the things, I've been in some other meetings on this, is that there are a lot of lots throughout the county, and I believe we've talked about trying to make sure that there, whatever goes forward also would have some requirements for a payment into this project. So, have we wrestled with that yet, or is that still in the thinking process about how to deal with that?
So, we've got a tax study going on now to understand the implications of this and make sure we don't inadvertently harm someone that we didn't intend to. So, we're going through that study now. We're evaluating the number of empty parcels or non-built parcels and looking at assessment for them, feeling they should also contribute to this, and that's something we've heard from elected officials as well as the public, and that is being considered as part of this. So, I think it'll be based on the size of the parcel, and a recommendation will come back to your council based on the tax study.
Okay, thank you very much. So, with that, I'd like to open it to members of the public.
Thank you, Mayor. First question, Jason. It said assessed at 11 cents per square foot. Per square foot of what?
Up to 11 cents. So, the tax study will ultimately determine what the final number recommendation is we go back.
Of what?
So, buildable square foot, commercial and residential.
So, of the building itself or of the lot?
The building itself. Good question.
Okay, so that's restricted to the building?
That's restricted to the building.
And as for especially like vacant lots and open space, how do we address, like, for instance, I have a lot at the end of Pacheco, and I also have property in the creeks. There's a My Rule of Laws that preclude me, and I just had fishing wildlife down there even when I had a permit, trying to address dead trees, which are fuel loads. So, how do we get through this without going through all the permits to address the other requirements so we can take care of some of this vegetation?
I think there's a balance there, and if we can get somebody out to look at it when fishing game's there and make an assessment, you know, some of that material in the creek is beneficial to wildlife, but it's finding balance. And shade along the creeksides, I've worked with, we've worked with a lot of different agencies on that specific issue, and I think there's a balance there.
Well, I agree there's a balance, but I think we need to have some parameters so it's not subjective, especially if there's risk of assessment, because if there's an assessment on some of this property that's not paid in five years, the county will go ahead and auction the property for that outstanding balance.
So, I might suggest one thing. It sounds like Michael has some specific questions.
Well, I mean, these are questions everybody should pay attention, because this is a substantial thing. So, I don't know my square footage by building, but I just assessed, if you assessed me a .11 cents per square foot of land, that cost me $116,000 a year.
Yeah, no, no, no.
So, let's do this. I would suggest, I mean, I think these are, there may be other folks who have questions on this, but this is pretty specific, and Jason has offered to talk to people offline, so why don't we do that?
Okay, well, one last thing, something I did speak to Jason in advance about. My opinion that Frank correctly brought up, you can do all your Fire Safe Marin you want, but if you don't have a path for the egress of people to get to a safe place, it won't happen. And our two paths, Sir Fran Street Boulevard and Center Boulevard, will be landlocked. Our downtown area will be landlocked, which means that even the fire apparatuses can't get to the needed areas. So, I mean, that's probably as important as possible, and there's different suggestions we make in our community to make alternative paths to avoid that impasse.
Thank you, Michael. So, other comments from members of the public?
Yes, I have some comments, and I just want to start by thanking, as a member of the Cascade Canyon Firewise Community, thank Todd and Fire Safe Marin and Chief Weber for all the work they're doing. But tonight, basically, I'm speaking on behalf of a large group of climate and environmental organizations, including 350 Marin, and we support the Wildlife Prevention and Mitigation Initiative. Our primary goal, though, is to broaden the scope and the appeal of the initiative for those of us concerned with climate change and the quality of Marin's environment. So, we applaud the Marin Wildlife Prevention Authority mission. The countywide effort and the resources sought are appropriate to the urgency and the escalating scale of the dangers that we face. And as the initiative is further refined, we urge the authority and all Marin communities to consider the impact of climate change, what it, that it has on the conditions that intensify wildfires and prolong the duration of the wildfire season. We endorse the mitigation, the fire mitigation strategies that also protect the resiliency of our natural of our natural environment, reduce carbon emissions, and sequester carbon whenever possible. This initiative offers a real opportunity to reduce both the threat of wildfire and climate change that is fueling that threat. It's also an opportunity for full community participation in carbon reduction efforts as we harden our homes and manage our vegetation to mitigate the risk. To that end, we have prepared a list of amendments and an outline for best practices for environmentally sensitive vegetation management that we have shared with the fire professionals. And specifically, there are four things that we support. The vegetation management using environmentally sound practices that minimize the release of greenhouse gases, compost vegetation for safe carbon sequestration, and protect the biodiversity and resilience of Marin's landscapes. Two, public education efforts that promote fire-resistant homes, defensible space, and household carbon emission reductions mitigating future wildfires. Obviously, replacing highly flammable, non-native plants with fire-resistant varieties. And again, also, as a commissioner, we strongly support the grants being available for older adults, persons with disabilities, and low-income homeowners who need assistance maintaining defensible space and hardening their homes. So we also strongly support the Citizens Oversight Committee. We suggest including representatives from the climate and environmental communities. The residents of Marin are a tremendous resource, and we're ready to pitch in and help. Thanks.
Thank you, Jody.
Hi there. My name is Stephanie Hellman, and I happen to be running for town council.
We don't make political campaign announcements at council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Something that I think we need, and I happen to have friends in Santa Rosa that lost their homes, and so this means a lot to me. A question about next fall or for the elections. So for the 19 municipalities or townships, how might that work if, let's say, 16 of them vote in favor at 2/3? Is it an all-or-nothing situation, or how might that work?
So it would be a countywide initiative, and therefore it would require 2/3 majority countywide, not specifically by agency. And that's why the resolution would be passed by each local agency, asking the board of supervisors to put it on a countywide initiative.
Okay, so it has to, so it's not county, it's not town by town? Okay, thank you. And as far as hardening is concerned, I've been out in the community, and my, I live on Manor Hill. Would, my question is, would there be resources, would the town of Fairfax have the discretion to use funds to increase, to allocate for additional chipper days for this? Because my neighbors in particular are concerned about inspections and evaluations, and we're hearing a lot about hardening and the increased costs related to that. So can you, can you help me understand?
So short answer is yes, that the intention of the program is to allow that local piece to accelerate. There would also be grant funds available for those activities, but the council would have discretion working with the local fire agency, I assume, but ultimately, the council have discretion. As to if they want to accelerate, they can use those local funds for that, for things like grants or other items, and accelerate and enhance the programs they're already doing.
Okay. And my last question is regarding staff. Is there anything specific to additional staff for the Ros Valley Fire Department, or is that to be determined?
So for staff-wise, the JPA, again, we're trying to keep the staff as minimal as possible, but it's, this is for Wildland Fire Prevention Activities. And the opportunity would be for locally, they could use the funds to hire their own inspectors to do the defensible space inspections, or opt into a pooled inspector program that would most likely be seasonal employees that would work for the JPA.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Other questions or comments on this matter from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to thank Chief Weber, and Chief Weber, I think you're incredibly generous giving your phone number out. I don't, I don't know how those four children will survive, but thank you, everyone, for coming in. I think, I know we're anxious to get to the next item, but I think it's 9 o'clock, and we'd like to take an eight-minute break. So thank you very much for everyone. We'll take eight minutes, and let's get back here then. Okay, could everyone please take their seats? And if you want to have side conversations, please leave the room. Thank you. So we'd like to take up receiving the update on the Perry Park play structure preliminary design concepts. So Recreation and Community Services Manager Anne Manos. So Anne, take it away.
Okay, thank you. I think for the benefit of the public, I'm just going to read the staff report so people know the general overview of what's happening. So in 2018, the Parks-
Can we stop side conversations up here, please? Sorry, Anne.
Sure. In 2018, the Parks and Recreation Commission began the process of considering design options to replace the two large existing play structures in Perry Park. Park has been working with volunteer playground designer Richard Sloan here to explore and develop design concepts for the new play structures. Richard designed the recent playground structures at the Loganitas School District. To assist in the process, the town retained architect Teresa Tamley, who is here, to develop the plans based on Richard's concepts. Park's goals are to replace the two main playground structures at Perry Park to accommodate the growing number of families in Fairfax, address the maintenance and inspection issues, preserve the current playgrounds in character and charm, and rebuild with cedarwood, durable, low-maintenance, and resistant to rot and sex and decay. So what we're going to do next is have a short presentation with Teresa and showcasing the designs, and it will take you through the site map and the placement of the new designs for the two-to-five-year-old area and also the five-year-old and up playground area. We will also provide a brief update on our fundraising efforts and discuss the next steps in the process. The fiscal impact, the budget has allocated 80K in Measure A funds towards the park project, and we're continuing to fundraise, which we can discuss a little bit later. So Teresa? Yeah?
I'm Teresa Tamley. I'm architect in-
Teresa, you need to speak into the mic.
Okay.
We're being filmed.
Got it.
And there's a lot of folks that watch us at home.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we have been working on developing, basically replacing the two wooden structures. We're not dealing with the entire playground park, just the smaller structure in the beginning, which is the structure for two-to-five-year-olds, which is here, and then the other structure for the five-to-12-year-olds, which is up further in the playground. So just for orientation, the street is out here. This is that pathway that disappears under the sand that runs through the middle, and so we're trying to replace those essentially in a similar footprint as the, as the current structures, but doing a little bit more to them. So I'm going to start with the two-year-old to five-year-old structure, which is always a simpler structure for younger children and functions that they can have, play with. And so, for example, this is the two-to-five structure. Just for your reference, the concrete walkway runs right about in here. So we have what we call always a transition point where you can enter the structure, which is right here, and you could come up the stairs. And our idea is to get as many events as possible on there so they can have as many activities and to keep them interested, but also have parents be able to be engaged with them. And parents can get on the structure, parents can be on the outskirts of the structure and still be with their children. So we are reusing several aspects of the current structure. You'll notice the swirly slide over here, we're going to reuse from the existing structure. Over on the left side, there's a double slide we're going to reuse from the existing structure. And there's also a climbing wall that we're going to reuse from the existing structure. So we're, and also under here is that little blue tunnel that exists out there that we would also like to reuse. So the concept is, is that we have two, two smaller structures connected with what we call the wobble bridge, which is a movable bridge that moves a little bit as they run across it. But then we have the secret tunnel underneath where you can get into the underworld under the structure. So it's kind of two levels of play from top to bottom. And then, so you can see on this side, as we come around, we've come around the left side of the structure. Here's the double slide that comes off, and you can come up off there, or else you can come over here, and there's, we're going to build an onsite log climber, which was a request of the town to have that. And then we come around the, oops, wrong direction, sorry. Come around the other side of the structure. We have that log structure here. Here's the wobble bridge with the tunnel. We have what we call a snake climber here. This is one item on this structure that we will, are proposing to purchase, which is a nice little climber up to the structure. So the goal was to get at least three activities to four activities per structure, to have a lot of variety of how you want to get up, how you want to get down, how you want to move around the site. And then over on this side here, which faces the picnic tables and faces the street, we have a little neck climber that you could climb up to this structure, and you could climb up to go down the swirly slide. You can go over the snake climber, you can go across the wobbly bridge and come back around. So, and then here we are back at the beginning where we were with the entry stairs and the climber and the spiral stair. So the idea was to provide them a lot of activities and a lot of interest and just a lot of fun. So that's the two-to-five structure, and then if we move across the playground to the five-to-12 structure, it gets a little bit more advanced, because we're now either between five and 12 years old, and we can do a little bit more things. And so this structure is placed such that, let me see, let me go back to here. So this slide right here is facing the mysterious sand-covered walkway. So the sand-covered walkway runs right about through here. The creek is out at this side. There's a redwood grove over here, and the big climbing structure is back here. So on this structure, again, there's two covered structures, but there's a lot of activities here. So I'm going to come around to this side here, and here we are. We're running into the playground. We've approached this playground. We can come over here and come up the stairs and get onto this little tower and come down the double slide, which is another reuse from the existing structure. And then we can come around this side, and if we've come up the stairs, we can come up the ladder over here and come down the fireman's pole, which is another reuse from the existing structure. And then we come around here, and we've got some new activities which are super fun. We've got this, which is going to be the hand rings that you can go across, go across there to this platform out here, and then there's another bar over here, which is going to be what they call swizzle sticks, which are the things that stick down. They have little mushroom platforms at different heights, and you can climb across that. And then when you get around there, you can come across there, oh. And what we did, it's hiding back there, but this little white thing right there, if you remember, there's a concrete log out there in the playground right now that's kind of, it's over towards the bathrooms, and it's kind of hidden in the sand, and no one really uses it, but we're going to reuse it, because we like to reuse things, and it's super fun to integrate them in there. And so the idea of this structure is when you're a kid, the sand is always hot lava, and you have to be able to get to every single event without touching the sand. So that was the, that was the excitement of this structure. It's like, okay, how can we connect this one to that one to this one to that one and get them all in place and have a really great time and never have to touch the ground and never have to go home? So, so yeah, so that was the extent of it, and it's been super fun to design, and we've integrated, in this structure, we've reused the log, we've reused the spiral climber, I mean, the spiral slide, we've reused the double slide, we've reused the fire pole. And so, but we've created the new structures, and for, we haven't added the detail to this, but a lot of you might be familiar with the Loganitas Playground, which I designed with Richard. We did a lot of extra detail to it and colors and themes, and so we're going to have a theme for each structure. Like, we're thinking of Fairfax and nature, and the two-to-five-year-olds is going to be like a forest theme, and it might have some tree images on it, or some squirrels, or some little critters. And then the bigger structure, we're thinking of more kind of a creek forest theme, like, you know, we're going across the log that's running across the creek, and we've got, you know, creek things and tree things and kind of little, you know, just very Fairfax-y. So we're super excited about it. So we're ready to kind of start to look at that level of detail now that we've got the structure designed, and we've got them to fit with all the necessary clearances, and I'm not going to fall off and hit this or that. So, so yeah, so that's the structure. I do have a picture of the Loganitas one. I'd have to get to it. So if you want to go through that, I'll just put up that picture.
Excuse me, we're not taking public comments. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Part of the team. Forgot.
He is the team.
Apologize.
And then right at the end, yeah.
Why don't we start talking while we're waiting for that? Oh, you got it. Okay, great.
So that, there it is.
This is one new program, Loganitas Playground at Loganitas Upper Campus School that we did.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Sorry, sorry. This is Loganitas School. We did it probably two years ago now. It was a similar theme of multiple structures, and how do you get from one to the other without touching the ground? And how can you add as much excitement and activity as possible and make it look really great with a lot of added detail and colors and character?
And what was the cost of the Loganitas Playground?
That's a little bit of a trick question, because the materials were purchased, but all of the labor was volunteer. So the community came together and we formed, we had work weekends, and we formed teams of workers, and the people came out and like, a group of people were on Structure 1, and they were on Structure 2 and Structure 3, and we divvied it up so that each team had a structure to work on. And then there were other volunteers like staining, some volunteers went home and cut all of these details and brought them back, and then people would be there, and other people would be staining those on site. You know, people would come and haul bark, you know, it was a very collaborative effort.
You need to speak into the microphone, because we're being filmed, and people watch at home. Sorry.
Some of the events were provided by donors who just, who said, okay, I'll buy a slide, and they would purchase a slide and we would install it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so now I'll just go a little bit into the fundraising. So we've, we've launched a GoFundMe campaign for raising 25,000. We're about 10,000 in. So I think once these designs get published and there's more visibility, that we'll start moving towards that 25K in addition to what's been allotted in Measure A. So I did reach out to the folks at Loganitas. It was upwards of 100,000, the playground, but this playground is massively bigger than what we're looking at.
Okay.
So I think, I think we're okay with funding, depending, I mean, we'll have to see.
Thank you.
And then the next steps. Garrett, did you want to talk about next steps too, or?
I'll keep you up.
Well, just, the next steps for this is getting a structural engineer, and then getting someone to sign off on the inspection aspect of it, and then it will go out to contract, and that's when we'll get the costs.
And the structural engineer is somebody who is specific to playgrounds.
Yeah.
From what I understand, that's a specific expertise?
Yeah, and we're using the same structural engineer that did the Loganitas one.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, and I just want to really applaud Richard. He's volunteered many hours. Many, many hours of his time coming to meetings, giving me all the information, bringing his team on. I'm thrilled to be working with him, and it feels so positive that this is actually going to happen, so it's exciting. Okay.
So other questions for Anne or any members of the team? I just have one question. I'm anxious, and one of my neighbors takes his little girl to Perry Park. We'd really like to know when we can be there playing at the park. When do we think this is going to happen?
I think if we can keep moving this along, that spring 2020, we can do demo.
With some caveats?
Yeah.
With a lot of caveats?
Okay, well-
I'm pushing for spring 2020.
I think we would love that.
Yeah.
And Anne, could you-
And Ann, could you, for the benefit of everyone who's watching at home, and is absolutely enthralled by these plans, how does one go to the GoFundMe site?
So all you have to do is go to the town website, and under Perry Park, it gives you the description of the project, a link to the GoFundMe campaign. If you don't have a ton of money, at least you can, you know, buy a tote bag or a Perry Park t-shirt. Those are for sale. Come to our Perry Park cleanups. The next one's October 26th. And just, yeah, you know, stay in touch with us, because we want to, you know, I think there will be volunteer opportunities as we come down, but those all aren't sorted out yet.
So just remember to have that announcement about the Perry Park cleanup on our agenda for October, so we can get the word out even more broadly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Yeah, Ann, thank you, and to Park and Rec, and to all of you, Fairfax Recreation, who have, I mean, this has been a
Yes.
A long haul. Thank you, Richard, for supporting and inspiring this along, and, yeah, soon as possible.
Yes.
Soon as possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, all the members of the project team. So now, we're going to move on to the item we've moved ahead, which is, discuss. I think Peter wants to have grandkids now. Discuss, consider petition from residents of Hickory Road regarding the paving of the road, and I think first we'll have Garrett do the staff report.
Sure. As, as some background, actually, in May 2019, the residents of Hickory Road submitted that petition that you received. According to our town code, in time, the council receives a petition for residents, of which 25 residents sign it. It would be on council agenda for discussion. This was the agreed-upon date, just due to different scheduling conflicts. And so, the residents or the neighborhood had submitted a similar petition back in 2014. Really, as, as background, the town, as you know, in general, has some limited resources to address kind of roads. Typically, we focus most of our efforts on arterial and collector streets. Those are streets that have more vehicle traffic on them. In 2017, we have a pavement management plan. Pavement management plan basically said the town needed to budget about 600,000 a year for road maintenance, in order to keep your PCI, which is your pavement management rating, the same. Really, the last few years, we've budgeted at a higher level. Obviously, it's still inadequate to get back, to cover all that deferred maintenance from the previous years. We have about 500 budgeted this year for specific roads and some maintenance activities. Hickory Road in 2017 had a PCI of 14. Typically, any PCI, roads with PCI is of less, 25 or less require full reconstruction. So what that means, in essence, is the road might deteriorate more to the users, but the cost to fix it remains the same. So whether it's 25 or one, it's the same amount of work to reconstruct the road. And looking at the, looking at the pavement management plan for 2017, indicated there's about 23,000 square foot of road that would need to be reconstructed. We think that would cost at least 200,000, maybe more, it's hard to say. Everything always seems to cost more, you know, you'd have to bid it out. Obviously, if you wanted to do something like that, we did reallocate from other projects. It's not something we anticipated. We do acknowledge, in the petition, they indicated that we last repaired the potholes on the street back in 13 or 2014. We didn't, I guess we used code patch back then. So what we're going to do, in September, we're going to go ahead and use hot mix, which is kind of hot asphalt, which would be better on the potholes, so we'll go ahead and do that. But pretty much, we looked at different options. There's a lot of alligator cracking, that's kind of those cracks in the road, and there's really not much you could do that, with that, other than reconstruction. I mean, you could look at what we refer to as an overlay, which is you throw one inch of asphalt or so over the top. The problem is, the road would look great for a year or two, and then it would start to unravel. You would just have chunks of asphalt all over the place, and you'd have the same condition at some point. So it's not a very effective use of funds. You may recall, we talked about a similar concept to the Parkade parking lot. If you remember Parkade, its condition, maybe you could argue parts of it was similar to what the condition is in Hickory, and we looked at maybe doing something like that to save costs. But you would have the same problem. It looked great, but once you start going over a lot, it would start to deteriorate. So really, staff is scheduled to go ahead and do all the pothole repairs in September. But on that, we don't have any other plans to address the situation at the road, unless the council wished to reallocate funds, or if you only wanted to repair portions of Hickory, but I don't know what the benefit would be. Like, the flatter area, if you just did some spot reconstruction, called digouts, it could help, but it would just be that one portion of road. And I don't know if that's a good thing or not. It's really a policy call on the council's part. But that concludes the staff report, and obviously, I know residents are here.
Just a quick thing, I don't think everybody is familiar with terms such as arterial and collector streets. Can you explain what those are, and maybe give an example, and what the Hickory is not, an arterial or collector? So, maybe you can explain that a little bit for folks who are not so savvy in pavement management plans.
Sure. Basically, most of the roads in town are called, classified as residential. Residential streets feed into collector streets, collector streets go to the arterials. The arterials are like Belinus or Francis Drake. Maybe Forest is considered one, I'd have to go back and look. Collectors would be those streets off the neighborhoods in which they're feeding in to some of the larger streets. But the best way I'd describe them are, they are the roads that usually aren't one-way or cul-de-sac, and they just get a lot more vehicle traffic as people try to get through town to the main ways in and out, which is Belinus, Sir Francis Drake, and maybe you could argue Forest, because that goes into San Selma.
And is there a collector street example that you could provide that might help people?
I'm thinking scenic might be considered, it's probably a collector street.
Okay.
I don't think that's an arterial.
Maybe Cascade.
Cascade is probably, is a collector street, that's true.
Okay, well, thank you, John. All right, so if
I, I wanted to ask something before we go to public. Could you explain, I think in really basic terms, the pavement management index, or, because I think that that is confusing, and I think we, we make decisions based on that that don't necessarily seem like common sense decisions.
Okay. So the PCI, and I didn't bring the pavement management plan, but every two years, basically every two years, the town gets a grant, and we're part of the MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission. They actually do analysis, and they're doing that this year with a consultant, where they take a look at all the roads in town and give it a rating. I believe a rating between 60 and 80 is considered, wait, 60 to 70, 60, 80 is fair, sorry, let me think about this. Anything above 90 is very good or excellent. Maybe 80 and 90 is very good. 70, 80 is good. Pretty much, our roads are fair. I kind of forget, in the 60s to 70s, maybe 60 to 80s is considered fair, fair condition. What we are finding is, because we can't put enough money to maintaining our PCI, is that our rating, overall average rating in town, this is the balance of good roads and bad roads, overall, I believe in 2017 may have been 63. It's dropping by one PCI a year, just because we can't keep up. So our roads, on the average, you know, are just in fair condition. I didn't, sorry, I forgot to bring the report. It would tell us, like, 25% of our roads considered poor, you know, 60% fair, and 40% good, or whatever the math is, 20% good. So, in other words, it's just a rating the consultant gives on the condition, and what the report, the whole purpose of a pavement management plan, is that you can develop a strategy for doing your maintenance, which is things like we've called, like slurry seal, which is basically pinning the road to extended life, so that it doesn't deteriorate as much, and thus extends it, so you don't have to reconstruct it. Your roads that need to be reconstructed right now, they're just always going to need to be reconstructed, 25 or less. You get different management levels, where if you just do some maintenance and repair, you could extend the life of that road, which is more cost-effective. I guess that's the best way to describe it.
And just one thing to remind you, perhaps, before we did the 2017 work, I think the town was only allocating less than 200,000 a year on pavement management, and we significantly increased that. So we've been trying to spend even more resources to get what we can done. So, if there's no other comment, questions specific to staff, I'd like to open it up to
A couple of questions.
Okay.
Garrett, I don't know if you have this number readily avail, this available, but do you remember the last time Fairfax did a, issued bonds to do a major paving project? And how extensive was that?
So I don't have it in front of me, but in the early, early to mid 2000s, the towns, the town did general obligation bonds, we referred to it as Measure K, and that, I think, total allocation may have been like $6 million to do road improvements. And that was in the, call it, say, 2006, 2008, maybe 2004, 2002. And then what happened, I believe, in 2008 and 2012, the town refinanced those bonds, because interest rates dropped, and took the proceeds, which wasn't a lot, maybe a couple hundred thousand, and put that in toward roads. What I recall is, in 2012, before I got here, that 150, 200,000 from the last refinancing was used to do repairs in Sir Francis Drake. And pretty much since then, the one time we went to council and suggested, does it make any sense to refinance any general obligation bonds? And what we discovered was, no, it wouldn't make any sense to finance, to pull a little money out. So we just refinanced and dropped the cost to the residents who were paying for the bonds. So it's, it's been a while since we issued general obligation bonds at any level to do repairs.
And just a reminder, general obligation bonds are kind of the gift that keeps on giving. We're paying a significant amount of money to pay off those bonds every year.
Yeah, residents, their, their property taxes are
And related to that, because, I mean, there are so many, there are so many streets that are really begging for being redone. The, what would the cost be to repave the whole town? It'd be somewhere around $20 million or something, is that?
I, I didn't really have a chance to try to get that number, but I think, what I looked up, in the 2017 pavement management plan, it said if the town spent $10 million over five years, we would raise our PCI average from 63 to 84, which in essence would be, you're either reconstructing, repaving, or maintaining almost all your roads in town to get to the, that's like a very good level.
So that would be about $10 million?
So at least $10 million, because that was in 2017 dollars.
Right. And, and just, our total budget is about 13 million?
That's correct. It's about 10.7 operational, 3 million for capital, of which, I think this year is a half a million toward roads.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I'd like to open it up to the members of the public who've been patiently waiting. And you want to come up to the microphone, press the button. And if you feel comfortable doing so, state your name and address.
Yes, Michael Baurnfein, and 58 Hickory Road, a resident since 2003. And, Mr. Toye, you are correct. We were before the council, five and a half years ago, and that was a similar petition at that time. Our concerns then are the concerns we have today, and that is the safety of the citizens and the residents of that street. I, I don't think anybody here is angry, but I will say that there's an incredible frustration, and it's a frustration with our inability to get some improvement in the street, which is absolutely deplorable. And it's not me that's saying that. The outside consultants who provided the information to you all on the pavement improvement plan, listed Hickory Road as number four. Ahead of it were two small cul-de-sacs. One was 60 feet long, the other's 200 feet long, and then a forest terrace. On our street, we have 26 homes, and the, the new demographics we have, we have 69 residents on that street, and this is what's really changed. We have 13 children under the age of 12 years old. We have five teens, 23 adults, and nine super seniors over 70, two of whom are disabled. One gentleman here who has Parkinson's and is in one of the worst spots of the street, had to leave, he couldn't stay. In fact, we had, I think, I counted 21 people who were here at one time to talk this evening. So I hope you know that we're serious, and we need some help. When I say deplorable, I mean, you talked about pavement. I just went outside next door, and I just picked up the shoulder of the street. You can do it, too. You can drive your bike down that road, too, and see what happens to you. It's because we've got potholes, we have got rubble on the streets, gravel, that's where the kids fall down with the bikes. That's where people really have a problem, twisting their ankles, besides the potholes. Bad shoulders. I want to take you back a little bit to 2012. There was a massive oak tree, actually, right next to my property on the other side. It came down, and it smashed the heck out of my house, my neighbor, who I think is still here, smashing two of his cars. About $50,000 in damage. We took care of that. But the city refused to acknowledge that it was in the right of way. It's actually three-quarters
So Ms. Serboenfeld, you're over three minutes.
Okay. Oh, I thought I got four minutes.
No, you have, no, you get up to three minutes.
All right.
And I know there's a number of other folks, so I think you would need to finish up.
May I conclude? All right. It is, as I said, a safety issue, and each of the people who will be talking tonight will be talking about the safety of, for their children, and themselves, and those people who use Hickory Road.
Thank you.
It's first in priority.
Thank you.
All right, I'll leave it at that.
Hello, my name is Michael Branton, 102 Hickory Road. Thank you for hearing us. I have a disabled son, and when he was going to special needs school, the, the short bus driver refused to drive up Hickory Road. She said it was too dangerous to take her bus, so my wife had to take the, our son to Las Galinas at the time, until we hired an attorney to threaten the school district to get him to bring a taxi up to get my son, because obviously, my wife had to work. So I just think that it's a situation that if, if the school bus driver won't drive up to the top of the street, it's serious. I defy you to find another street in Marin that looks like this. Thank you. And I'm sorry that we live on a, we don't live on a main street, so we don't have the benefit of having that reason, but we live there, and it's really bad news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Barrett. I live on 60 Hickory Road. I was asked to read Jerry Pelletier's letter to the council. He was the individual that is disabled, and wanted me to read his letter. He couldn't stay out as, this late.
Okay, why don't we get started?
Pardon?
Thank you. Why don't you get started reading?
Okay. I'm also a bicycler, a road biker, and I just wanted to comment that it's treacherous to go down that hill on my road bike. Jerry, excuse me. This is Jerry. My wife and I are longtime residents of Hickory. We purchased our property home 48 years ago, when Hickory was an attractive and well-maintained street. All the neighborhood children played in the street, learning to ride their scooters and bikes with no accidents. Today, the street is deteriorating with potholes, broken asphalt, poorly, poorly patched sewer and water repairs. No parent would let their child ride their bikes on the street today. It is an accident awaiting to happen. I have Parkinson's disease, my gait and balance is severely affected, necessitating my need to use a cane at times. The condition of our street makes it a daily challenge for me to take a walk. I'm, I'm not only the only senior citizen with health issues affected by this condition on Hickory Road. Our home is located at the bottom of the hill, where the debris deteriorating asphalt accumulates, and eventually goes into the storm drain. In a heavy rainstorm, it can back up, causing flood of the street. Two very large potholes in front Two very large potholes in front of my fire hydrant stay filled with water for most of the winter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Stuart Cubley. I live at 86 Hickory Road with my wife Shay Irving, who's here. Couple incidents, I'd like to say, I bought my property in 98, and when I first bought it, I thought, well, it's kind of quaint, the way the road is. But it's gone from quaint to being really alarming. And there's, there's two incidents that have happened recently. Two years ago, we had a, a car go off the edge, just at the bottom of our driveway as it was going down the road. Went, there's a very, it's very narrow, and the road is beginning to disintegrate on that upper side. And one wheel got off the road and the car dangled over the edge and was hanging there. And the Fairfax police were called and a report was made. And then just at the bottom of that slope, which is about 30 feet down, there's a home with two young children. And so, they were evacuated at that point, and Alan and his wife Holly had to take their kids and weren't sure whether this car was going to come tumbling down on their house or not. So, the tow truck came, got the car out of there. And then, just this past winter, one of the, the big garbage truck coming in early in the morning also went off that same edge and got his, his, his truck, his tire stuck. And so, he's, he's there spinning around, trying to get out of the rut, and Alan sees this happening again, and it has to evacuate once again. And we have a picture of that in, in the presentation. So, this is just something waiting to happen. And, and there are people who are in danger, children who are in danger. And it seems to me that something has to be done. I'm not sure if it's a guardrail on that edge or something, but it's really, is, is alarming, and it's something I think that we're all here for that reason to tell you about.
And, sir, what's the address where that happened?
I'm at 86, so, it was, it's just down...
71.
It was at, 71 is the house that was evacuated.
71, and as you're going downhill, it would be on the right-hand side?
When you're going downhill, it's, it's right at the base of that, right on the, right as it turns. Right, there's a, there's a sharp turn there, and they're right at the base. Yeah.
Thanks, thanks for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Genevieve Solicito, I'm at 48 Hickory Road. Just a couple of personal points that have happened within our family and in front of our house. Where I live, right at sort of the bottom of the hill, there are several huge potholes out front of my house and the Oliver's house that seem to collect all the gravel and debris from the winter down the road. A lot, a lot of loose gravel. A couple of times, one time I was drinking coffee and watched huge delivery trucks come down, hit those potholes, and that gravel just sprays up against the cars that are on the road. We actually park our junky cars on the street on purpose now, because, because that's happened so many times. And the most important thing to me, my 19-year-old son rides a motorcycle, and he's had two incidences coming home on the street, just regular driving, it's a 25 mile an hour street. There are cracks in the road that are about four to six inches wide. I went out and took some pictures yesterday. Some of them are only a couple feet, some of them go about six feet long. And they're just deep enough that a front motorcycle tire gets right in there. And because there's so much gravel on the road, Nick hadn't seen it a couple times and almost lost his bearings. And one of the times, coming out, hit the gravel and his back tires spun. So, personally, it's a concern for safety for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Bragman, 30 Hickory. And just to follow up on what Genevieve said, there's a lot of water coming off that hill. I actually think I read there may have been some, a water company back 100 years ago that collected water out of that creek. So, that is one of the reasons the road is deteriorating. There are spots that are much worse. There's an S-turn as you go up the hill, there's, on that one portion that's been described, the road is actually crumbling, so you have a hard edge where the road, it's, it's, there's, the road has just crumbled away. So, a couple ideas, I think you should triage that road and take a look at some of the more severe defects in the road, because they are public safety hazards. I think it would be good to maybe take a walk out there with the town engineer and see if he has any ideas to do a little value engineering and address some of these really acute areas that the residents are talking about. And the last thing, I would really strongly suggest that the town do, and maybe a group of us neighbors, would be to possibly hire somebody like Warren Karlinsig, who can do some evaluation of green engineering, that water, because part of the problem is the water is just pounding that pavement. So, you've, that's got to be addressed. The ideal way to address it is to disperse it, not onto the neighbor's property, but to maybe somehow do soft shoulders, something where the road at least has some pitch, you know, so that the water is, is being directed appropriately. Maybe there's some funding we can get from Flood District 9 to address it. So, there's, you know, there's a few different avenues, I think, that should be looked into, but I definitely don't think the status quo is sustainable, and it should, it should be looked at. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Millie Barrett, I live at 60 Hickory. I'm 76. I hate exercise, but I like to walk. Our street, I've twisted my ankle, I've fallen down, my bones aren't as strong as they used to be. We've been telling you this is an accident waiting to happen, and I certainly hope I'm not going to be the one to get hurt. I invite you all to come look at the street, it's really, really, it's, it's just deteriorating, it's crumbling, it's falling apart, there's hardly any road left in some of it, it's all horrible. In front of our house, there used to be like a, a concrete swell, that's all gone now, it's all been washed away. There's still some right in front of Michael's house, the concrete's still there, but in front of our house, that concrete's totally, pretty much gone. And when the water is flowing, it's like a foot deep, the road, and the road is totally being washed away, it's just, it's really bad. I have witnessed, since I've been there, I've been, I've witnessed a car, I mean, yeah, I witnessed that a car at, right in front of our house and in front of, I think it's 80, we're 60, 80, a car flipped over. And I don't know if it was the gravel that caused it to flip over, but it flipped over, totally flipped over. And then, I also was there when the garbage truck almost went over the hill. I have fallen, I've witnessed bicycle accidents. I don't ride my bike anymore, because I'm not that good at it anyway. And our road, I don't want to break anything, so I'm not riding a bike any longer. And I do like to walk. So, let's see if there's anything else. Well, basically, you're getting the idea, the road is dangerous, is a hazard. And, and talking about life, there's no life left on our street. The street is dead, that is not a live street. It, it's, it's a dead street. It needs to be revitalized and rebought back to life, rebirred.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, first, I wanted, I forgot to say, thank you all for doing what you're doing, it's a thankless job, and I really appreciate you being up there. I don't have the patience for it, so I really appreciate, appreciate that you do.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi there, I'm Brett Kelly, I live with my wife Betsy and my two young kids, Rose and Fergus, at 61 Hickory. We feel really, really, really lucky to be living in Fairfax. One of the reasons we feel lucky is that our kids get to ride their bikes to school, our three and four-year-old kids get to ride their bikes to school. It's amazing. Our little three-year-old is a pretty tenacious, bold little girl, and some of you might have met her, she's very bold. She, she rides her bike all the way down the hill, out onto Cascade, across the sidewalk, down Bolinas, all the way over to First Friends and Mono. And we ride with her, of course, we ride next door and whatnot. I can tell you that the only place that she's scared to ride is that first 150 yards in front of our house. She's a brave, little, strong girl, and she says, "It's too holy, Papa, I'm scared." And I hope you can think of her and the other kids in our neighborhood when you're making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Greg Shaw, I'm, I live at 69 Hickory Road. When Measure K came out, I really thought, oh, finally, they're going to fix these roads in Fairfax. I think I'll vote yes on that. I should have voted no, because mine's the only street of all the streets I saw. And you can talk about different streets that have to be paved, but all those little cul-de-sac little things around the theater got paved. And I said, well, maybe it's because they're 120 feet long. I kept saying, don't worry, they'll get to my street. I, I voted for it, I've been paying it on my taxes, and now, at this point, I'm wondering if I voted wrong. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Delechi, I've been a resident of 105 Hickory for almost 10 years now, so I'm at the end of the road, at the top of the hill. Some of my personal experience, my neighbor at 114 Hickory rode her bike down the hill, fell off, broke her arm. I have witnessed numerous delivery trucks get stuck and need to be towed, because their tire is hanging off the cliff. There is 50 to 100 potholes, patches, in less than a half of, a fifth of a mile. And just to reiterate again, I think the biggest concern here is 71 Hickory. If in fact, like this winter, a truck crashes into their house, it's a young couple, two young children, and a brand-new puppy. So, I strongly urge this become a priority on your list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is George Oliver. I've been at 42 Hickory for 38 years. I'm a personal injury lawyer who recently sued the city of Mill Valley for a bicycle accident because of the road on Blythe Dell. This gentleman was awarded $380,000. Now, besides the legal aspects of not maintaining the roads, and that was an issue for the city of Mill Valley, that they didn't maintain the road, was why we prevailed. You park all of your vehicles, all your maintenance vehicles, including all your paving, paving vehicles, and your giant trucks at the bases of our street. So, we get to look at all of this construction vehicles all the time, continually, knowing you're not going to work on our street, but we can suffer looking at all of this equipment, which devalues our home ownership for the benefit of the city, and what do you do for us? Uh, we don't have $200,000, you know, you'll, we'll get around to you after we do the rest of the entire city. That just doesn't fly anymore. As soon as one of these kids wrecks on their bike, I hope they come to me, and then we'll find out whether it would have been cheaper to spend the $200,000 to fix the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Garrett, I don't believe we've had maintenance trucks, I think that's PG&E and MMWD, correct?
That generally is a staging area for different projects, lot can be MMWD, sewer, sometimes Shalati stores there when he does, recently, Refrastuck.
Okay, thank you. All right, excuse me, did anyone else want to speak on this topic? Okay, come on up. Come on up, please.
John Fitzpatrick, and I bought my place on Hickory Road in 1969, so I'm probably one of the older ones up here. I get the reward. So, so, the main problem there that I see is that creek coming down, it, it says it takes a turn, there was a creek there, and every winter, the creek comes down, it goes right onto the road, it's in front of Millie's house, and just wipes the place out. And unless you do something with that creek, it's a tremendous amount of water, as you guys know what happens here in the rain. Unless you do something with that creek, no matter what you do with the road, that creek's going to wipe the thing out again. So, I think the major problem with the road is the creek, and that's what I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patty Oliver, I'm actually George's wife, and he's the one that just talked about that big lawsuit in Mill Valley. I'm just going to talk to you on a personal level. I actually had my daughter in 2004, now she's 14 years old, and she's going to start driving. But the most important thing that I have to tell you is about her life cycle there. From the get-go, when I had a stroller, I had a, I got a stroller, kid, a friend of mine had one from the city, copied the same exact stroller, I couldn't use it on, on our road, because it kept hitting potholes. I had to go out and get a $1,000 stroller, so my kid wouldn't fall forward, face forward on the concrete. That's starting her first years. Then she rode a bike on training wheels, which would get stuck in the potholes. We encourage our kids to bike to school. Well, that's impossible on Hickory Road, it's absolutely impossible. And then, moving forward, you know, she's got a basketball hoop, like, it's just, the basketballs go out there, they're errant, you never know where, like, they're going to go. But the most important thing is, in front of our house, we talked about this stream, in the winter, I have ducks that live in front of my house because of huge potholes that have become literally a place for them to hang out, and they look great, but that's not where, the parking spot's what they should look like. It really, it's, it's a terrible place, it's embarrassing to me, to have kids that come from, like, Mill Valley, or Ross, or San Anselmo, or around the corner on a different street. It is absolutely dangerous and heinous to have people living in that condition. I'm really upset, and I do appreciate the work that you do, it's, it's great work, but this measuring thing also that I talked, that Renee talked about earlier, and tried to explain, that we're in like a purgatory situation, because it's not a main thoroughfare. We have a lot of kids on our street, and there's, and I know I have all these kids coming for parties, 120 kids the other day, the other day, not one of them drank. But I'm telling you, one of those cars is going to go off the street, and they're going to break their ankle, they're going to hurt themselves, it's, it's just, it's deplorable, and it's, it's not okay anymore, it's just not fair. So, I hope you'll consider it, and maybe some magic can happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Egger, 13 minute away, in the Cascades. You know, I sat up there some years ago, and we had a complaint about scenic, having potholes. And we said, well, you know, we just don't have a lot of money, we really can't fix them right now. And one of our residents came down scenic on a bicycle and fell. And it cost us at that time about $70,000. We probably should have filled the potholes. And so, you know, it, unless you've really been faced with the liability with the lawsuit, you, you, you kind of think, well, it's not going to happen. But in this litigious world, I, I think you've got to protect our town, and, and where all possible, come up with the means to, to, to correct the problems, street problems. Thank you.
Hi, Cliff Coke, 63 Hickory Road. I'm not an engineer, but it appears, when it's raining very hard, we're right just below that curve that we're talking about, the trucks falling into, but where the river basically runs on top of the roadway, that it needs, there needs to be some sort of subterranean drain system, so that the water that's flowing goes into a storm drain, just like you have on all of these flat streets out here. Or gutters, that would probably be next to a sidewalk, that will allow the water to flow off of the road onto concrete, that won't wear out, no matter how much water goes over it. But if you have asphalt, and I, I just have to say, patching any of those holes is, is a waste of everybody's money. You need to do something much bigger than that. And you're, you're actually saying... And you're actually saying that road needs to be rebuilt? That's exactly what has to happen. Needs to be torn all the way down to the bottom. There needs to be some drainage put in, build a new one, maybe some sidewalks, maybe some gutters. And I'm sorry, but that's what has to happen to make it safe. Everybody on the street and everybody in the world is getting older. I would like to be able to walk from my house to downtown on a sidewalk, or at least on a roadway that I know I can go with, that's relatively smooth. I currently don't have to use a walker or anything like that, but my wife and I try to go out on bicycles. We're adults. I'm an experienced cyclist. I don't want her going down that road with those huge potholes. And even if you filled them, then what do we have? We still have gravel flowing down the road. Very, very dangerous. Every accident I've ever been on a bike has been at less than 1 mile an hour in situations exactly like that. And I'm glad we have a lawyer living on our street. I might have to call him. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Cliff, can I ask you a question? You're talking about the water. One of the photographs that's labeled, I guess, J, this one here, and it shows water coming down. Wondering where roughly that, if you know the address of where that is, or if someone might be able to inform us a little bit about that. Was wondering where that is, and then...
That driveway that you see just on the right side there is Millie and John's house at 60...
60.
What's your 60? Yeah. And right across the street from that driveway is my house at 69, and the house right above me is 71, on the left side of that. And then, where the water is coming from is the driveway just beyond Millie's house, where it comes down. There's a lot of water in that area.
Was this picture, was this taken during, like, a really heavy flood rate event?
An average two- or three-day rainstorm will create that, and it'll run, I mean, it'll run for a couple, you know, the water will come down off that hill for another day after it stops and cross the road.
Ma'am, you cannot yell from the audience. If you want to speak, you can come up to the, people can't hear you when it's being filmed.
I appreciate the clarification of where these things are as people are talking about these various things in the road.
The water comes so straight down the road. If it's bad enough, it can cross over into the 71 Hickory driveway, which has been gravel in the past, and it'll take all the gravel off the driveway and block my garage door, which is right across the street.
So in other words, it'll go all the way, all the way across the street?
The water crosses the street and goes down, and I had to shovel six inches of gravel over 16 feet back up onto their property. That was the worst one we ever had. But on an average year, the gravel just kind of rolls down the middle of the street. Yeah.
Thank you.
I think I still have 30 seconds left, if I could. Cliff Koch, once again. Something that Mike was saying at the very beginning of this whole process, he was talking about an oak tree that fell a few years ago in a storm, where that tree was probably town property, the end of somebody's property, but out, more out in the street. Tree fell, was pulled out. Now there's a hole the size of an oak tree that's been sitting in there all this time. It's just sitting there. The city hasn't come through, the town hasn't come through and said, "Well, what we should do is probably fill this in," or stretch it out, or put a sidewalk over to do something to make it so it's a roadway. It's just a hole in the middle of the street. Please, take some time, walk on up, come to our house, get something cold to drink, and we'll be glad to show you around for a while.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak on this topic? Okay, bringing it back to the council for deliberations.
So I appreciate what you all have shown us, and I actually live, my house adjoins on the backside of Millie and John's house, so we're that close over on Valley. You're absolutely right, that street is a mess.
Actually, there's a concern with a potential conflict of interest. You probably should have recused from this item because you live so close to it.
No, I'm not really affected by it. Not affected by it.
It's, excuse me, it's within 500 feet. Excuse me, Janet, would you like to...
Well, it is probably within 500 feet, but the problem here is that we're talking about repairing the roadway, and that would not impact, assuming, would not impact his property, or property values.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I can just say something that, not an opinion, maybe I'll try to stay out of an opinion about what ought to be done about it, and it is a tough choice because this isn't the only street in town. But between Hickory and Valley where I live, between the back of Millie and John's house and the back of our house, there is actually a creek that comes down. I've always thought of that as being a creek that's there because Valley Road, where I live, used to be a creek. That's why I think it's probably called Valley Road. But the water has been diverted to that creek that's between our houses, and then on the other side of Valley Road, there's another creek. And I always assumed that that, the water that used to come down where Valley Road is, is now split between those creeks. But maybe that creek, and I guess my suggestion is that, I think, as one of the speakers said, someone like Warren Karlensig maybe could help with this, but really to get a good overview, not just of what's going on in the street, all this that's been well documented in here, but a larger picture of what's going on with the watershed. And that's probably what's causing the deterioration of Hickory Road. And maybe even that creek in there might be part of it. Maybe that might be an opportunity, because that creek that comes down does go underground and comes, goes underground all the way down Frustock and down to Bellinas and continues on underground from there. So there's a good channel down there that's well-maintained, and maybe some of this water ought to be going down that channel. Just looking for opportunities here. But I think that really looking at the core of the problem, it does seem to be that the core of the issue is water that's just eroding that hillside repeatedly.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Renee?
Yeah, I mean, you guys have made quite a case, and I rode my bike up there and spent a little time trying to figure out how I, how to turn around and what, you know, where the, where the obstacles were. It's quite obvious. You've made, made it incredibly clear. So to me, the only question is, you know, what do we do now? We absolutely have to do something. I agree, yes, the runoff is, you know, we're not going to repave or reconstruct a road that has a runoff problem, but bottom line is, we got to get, you know, I, my choice would be direct staff, to have someone go out there, an engineer, as Larry suggested. I think Warren Karlensig's a great idea, but I think that's later. That's about dispersing water that may come subsequent to any kind of project that we do that's a little more substantial. This requires a substantial look. I don't think we should sit here and debate about what the fixes are because we're not engineers, and we shouldn't pretend we are. I think that we should, and I would personally direct staff to go out, have Mark Lockaby and an engineer take a look at it, and then look at where we're going to get the money. Because, you know, as someone mentioned, and I appreciate it, what was your name, Cliff? Yes. That walking down that road is a hazard. But, you know, I work with some people out in Deer Park who really can't walk down Portius and down their sidewalks. So we have a lot of issues. We have aging streets and aging infrastructure and sidewalks, or no sidewalks. So I, I just want you to, I mean, I hear you. This is a serious problem. I would suggest that we take action to figure out what our next steps are to fix it. So I don't know how you guys want to proceed, but I don't want to be an engineer here. I want to, I want to take some action.
I think those are good suggestions, but let's let everybody sort of do their deliberations. John, did you want to go ahead?
Sure. Yeah, I'm familiar with Hickory, and it's, it's a bad street. I mean, it's, it was a bad street 10 years ago, 20 years ago. And the creek is one of the contributors. There's a lot of water coming down there. I mean, that, up above Hickory, that's a huge watershed. Over, in that same canyon, the same watershed, there's a huge stream that comes down and causes a lot of problems up above Lower Cypress. And right when it hits the end of the more developed part of Cypress, it dives into a culvert, and everybody thinks, "Oh, you know, it's not so much of a problem there because it's out of sight and out of mind in a pipe underground." And, yeah, I mean, and Hickory was built, you know, I don't know if it was built where there was a creek, but looking back through the old minutes of Fairfax in the '30s, it's, it's pretty, I mean, this was the major issue going on, you know, because they kind of flattened out a whole lot of the streets and the flats, and then the water just piled up behind them, and people were saying, "Hey, what about all these mosquitoes, you know, that my, my yard's a lake?" And then they filled in their yards, and it's been going on. I mean, we've altered the landscape a lot, and where it really shows up is in the wintertime. And water is, you know, is a pretty powerful force of nature. And Hickory is pretty steep. You know, I mean, I've, I've gone up and down, I don't know how many times I've gone up and down the street, but I'm pretty familiar, I like, the trails around town are one of my things that I pay a lot of attention to, and then there's, there's trails going up to Hickory and actually up past Hickory to the paper streets above, that some of those have been built on. It's a big problem. The PCI index, you know, that we've heard about, it's a really blunt tool. It's a way to measure stuff, but it doesn't measure that accurately. I mean, I live on scenic, which has the luxury of just about every car up on Manor Hill going by it several times a day. So it gets a lot of use, so I hear them all banging through the potholes. The flat section, yeah, is falling apart, but it's not as bad. But the steep part, you know, just across the bridge is falling apart a lot, but surprisingly, it's got a PCI of 69. So I'm like, "Oh, I guess that's in pretty good shape, huh?" Well, you know, but you can see the chunks falling out the same way because they average the whole street. Well, the average steepness on Hickory is pretty darn steep if you take that top part into account. And personally, I think that they should take the steep sections and draw a line and separate that from the flat sections, and that would give a more realistic PCI thing, but that's, that's something the consultant does. So I'm going on for a while here, but I basically, it needed to be rebuilt a while back, you know, and as we heard with the money, you know, how much money there is to go around, we need more than 10 times the amount of money that we've got to keep our streets in good shape. And I'm a really big believer, it's kind of like brushing your teeth, keeping your streets in good shape, but once they get rotten, start falling apart, you got to get some false choppers or whatever it is, or, you know. With a street, you know, it's coughing up the 200 grand. I wouldn't be surprised if it's more than 200 grand because I think really it, we need to manage the water coming down there. And, you know, and I think sinking water is great, but really, when all that water's coming down off the hill and doing the destruction that it's doing, that water, the ground is saturated, and it needs to be managed, unfortunately. Yeah, I'm in favor of trying to find the money and fix the, fix the street on the, I mean, the, the steep part is what's causing the problems farther down, too, because gravel is a hazard. I ride a bike a lot.
Okay, so...
So I agree.
Perhaps the Water District would be interested in a new reservoir.
So Peter, did you want to speak on this?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for a really cogent presentation, and your comments were all really illuminating and very, very, very helpful, and especially the little vignettes that everyone presented to help us understand the impacts. I think this picture says it all to me. There are a number of streets that are really creeks, that we forget that they're creeks until it rains, and then they're, the creek is happy to remind us, "No, I'm still a creek." And this looks like one of them. I think of Willow and Live Oak, which just gushes during a big rain. But I think this has, this does need to be addressed somehow with some kind of engineering. It would be nice if, as Larry said, we could do some kind of soft engineering to, you know, maybe capture the water into the groundwater or something. But as long as this state of affairs exists, it's just going to keep scouring things out. So I think it's, the deteriorating street and the gravel is a symptom of, you know, this cause that really does need to be addressed. And so, like Renee, I'd be in favor of, you know, investing and looking at some kind of way to address the root cause and then be able to, you know, repair the road, which is, like I said, a symptom of that. Because it doesn't seem like, it seems like any money spent on just repaving would be a waste of money because until you deal with the water, it's just going to dig it out again. So I don't, I don't know the scope and scale of what would be necessary, but I would be in support of investigating that, and it might be, might be a longer-term project, though, to deal with this water runoff. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, well, I'll add my thoughts. Thank you, everyone, and I want to say, this is a highly professional presentation. Thank you all for putting together quite a complete picture of what's going on in your testimony, and I know others had to leave early. But I would say a couple of things is that I think the suggestion that was thrown out by Larry Bragman and picked up from a couple of the council members is to get an engineer out there to really look at what's going on. I don't, Warren Karlensig has been always willing to do things for us pro bono, and if he's willing to also take a look and make some suggestions just for, we can show him these pictures, I think that would be helpful as well. I also think that, I don't think we can make a decision on reconstructing the road at this point. I think we are having, this year, coming year, we'll be looking at a pavement management plan again, but I do think we ought to go forward, just in the interim, and really fix those potholes. I've closed public comment, I'm sorry, I've closed public comment, so we're not going to take more comment. Let us fix those potholes and any of the big cracks that we can fix while we're doing the potholes, just for an interim fix. And then can we also look at where that tree fell and apparently this big hole? Let's see if we can fill that in as well with something so that we don't have a big old hole there that would, somebody can fall in. But I do like the suggestion that Renee threw out and others kind of picked up on. Let's get an engineer out there, take a look at it. And Larry, thank you for bringing good ideas, even though you're no longer on this council. You always come up with some great ideas. And see if it's possible if Warren will also take a look at it as well and maybe throw some suggestions out. But I don't think, and this may not be satisfactory to folks who live in the road, but I don't think we can make a decision tonight. I think we have to take a look further at this, and I think Peter brought up the fact that until we deal with this water, and John, and I believe Bruce, whatever we do will be undermined. So let's sort of take this stepwise and see what we can do to really understand what's going on out there, particularly with that creek that's running down the road. I found it pretty amazing that there's ducks in the potholes. I mean, it sounds kind of funny, it's humorous, but I know it's not humorous. So if the council agrees to direct staff to move forward in that approach, and if possible, bring it back to us in October. I know we've got to get, we can't do that, okay, November.
Mayor, if I will. I was told by Garrett that he was going to have town staff, our public works crew, go out. We have a hot patch set up that Tom rigged up on the back of that truck. And, yeah, it doesn't last very long, but, you know, if we go to, if we go to design and rebuild this thing, it's not going to be done for a year or two.
Well, John, that's what I directed, that we move forward on the pothole.
Well, I'm in support of what you say there, but I think we can patch this now while the weather is hot and get a year.
That's what I'm asking, is let's, let's do that. Let's also look at the hole where the tree fell out and was taken out, and... Let's also look at the hole where the tree fell out and was taken out, and, but let's get an engineer out there to take a look at it, see if we can get Warren willing to take a look at it as well. And Garrett, did you want to respond to that?
Yes, I just...
But let's do that hot mix.
I think I reported with the crews, we're going to do the hot mix in September, so they'll continue to do that. In terms of the tree hole, there's really, it looks like it's filled in, only thing we would put in, only we would put in is gravel.
Can we take another look at it?
Sure, but we're, we're not doing a reconstruct of it, we can fill it with some material, but we're not going to reconstruct it.
I think we could, I would just like to make sure that we can do some patches for now.
We can do that, and then what I'm trying to, what I think I'm trying to make clear is the scope of the project, just so you know, what we're going to embark on is going to be very extensive, because you're asking us to try to address runoff, obviously you can't redirect a creek, but if right now everything sheet flows on the street, there's no storm drain, I'm assuming, then it's going to continue the street sheet flow, because to install a storm drain, what's that, storm drain?
I don't know what that is, hopefully it's not, oh, it was me breathing, sorry. I apologize.
Luke, I'm your father.
I thought someone fell asleep on me.
It was like Darth Vader effects.
I was like, wow, I'm pretty unexciting, okay.
It was me, okay.
So, just so you know, water's tricky, because you can only address it so many ways, you're not going to install a storm drain, you could, but that'd be really expensive. Then you have the issue when you do things like that, then you're adding to the water flow, it creates some problems. Now, for the road itself, I know I said 200,000, but I went back and looked at some other estimates, so don't be surprised if you get there and it's more like 400,000 plus, just because that's, that's the cost. But what happens, was tricky on the road is, we're not planning to do sidewalk, that'd be an added cost, and we got to be tricky about the water flow, because we got to keep the water going where it was before, because I can tell you, every time we do a repave, people complain that we've redirected the water because the road was in a disrepair, it changed the water flow that people got used to, we change it back, creates a problem. So we don't do birmingham or things like that to redirect the flow. That all gets to be very tricky and very time-consuming, but to have an engineer to look at hydraulics, because that, your hydrology, in essence, is what you're asking us to do, take a look at. Okay, that's going to take some time, then it's where it's coming from, and then how does it flow, and then you have the overall road. So that's all going to take some time. Patching's easy enough, we could fill the hole with the tree, but it's just, wanted to let everyone know, this isn't something that's going to be done in 30, 60 days.
Well, I think, I did not, I mean, I heard some people say, let's find the money. I think we, we have a bigger discussion on finding the money, particularly if we're looking at 400,000, but I think we want to do a stepwise approach. Let's get out there, do that hot mix, let's look at some of the bigger cracks when we're doing the hot mix as well. It concerns me that the woman who talked about her son with the motorcycle, and I know I ride a bike, those tires get stuck in there as well, can we do that as well? But let's really take a look at this, and let's see if maybe Warren can give us some advice as well.
I'm in complete agreement, but I, I would respectfully request that we don't continue to ask Warren to work pro bono for the town of Fairfax. He really has given us quite a bit of time, and his work has been very, very useful, very effective, but I, you know, I don't feel comfortable with that.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
Let's do a...
It may not necessarily be Warren at this first stage.
Let's do a couple of things, Warren has actually enjoyed working with us, and he did a lot of work on the parcade with us. You know, the town does not have unlimited funds, so he can always say no, we can talk to him about payment, but let's not prescribe that from this dais.
Yeah, well, speaking as somebody who's done decades of free work for this town and never been paid...
We're not paying you, John.
People just keep on asking for more and more, and I think it's warranted to show Warren...
Let's not prescribe that from this dais.
I'm not saying let's all of a sudden start breaking the bank.
We don't have to do this right now, I needed to put that to the record.
Right, but it's like...
And, and I want to just underscore the point, I think, you know, it'd be great if there is some kind of like green solution, but I think we do need to also have a serious hydraulic, study, hydrologists look at it, because it is a, it's a very significant runoff, and, you know, hopefully there's some kind of soft approach to take, but I think we, we do need to look at it, study it, understand the scope of it, and, you know, come back and, and perhaps, as Larry suggested, maybe there are some flood control grants, but it does look like a problem that, that's just been neglected for many decades and, and really needs to be addressed at the root cause, so...
Okay.
Okay, John, let's wrap this up.
Can I please, yeah, I'd like to wrap up, but there's two comments that I'd like to make.
Okay.
Okay. One of them is with the, the managing the water going through there, I, yes, it's a lot of water, and I think if you try to engineer and put it in a pipe, it gets pretty pricey pretty fast, and then it's out of sight, out of mind. I'm thinking gutters, you know, something, you know, like concrete where, you know, it keeps the erosion down that that water's doing, but, you know, you're not trying to move the water around, because Garrett has a very good point, I mean, we saw it all up on Ridge Road and all kinds of places. People get upset when all of a sudden there's twice as much water coming into their yard, which is what would happen, well, if you start to redirect it. The other point that I wanted to make, you know, as along with concrete, is, yeah, it's, sidewalks are great, but under California law, sidewalks are the responsibility of the adjacent homeowner. That property owner is responsible for the sidewalk in front of your house, and a lot of times the town tries to make, sweeten the pot, make it easy to split the cost, but really, look at California law and that's...
And the trees.
Yeah, along with trees, you know, it's like your side of the street, it's, it's a contribution to the community, you know, and, you know, I got a sidewalk in front of my house, and a lot of people walk along it, and I'm glad that they do, because I like it when they walk, but...
Thank you.
It's the responsibility of the property owner, unfortunately.
Okay.
Before we close, I just think these folks deserve to sort of have some concept of how we're going to proceed, because it's terrible to leave and say, well...
So I think the concept is, number one, we're going to do the hot mix on the potholes and large cracks. We're also going to see about that hole where the tree was, to see if we can fill that in with something. The next step is, Garrett, we'll look at getting an engineer out there to take a look at what's going on with the sheet flow as well as the street as well. We'll also see if Warren Carlinzig is willing to take a look at some green infrastructure. And I think the schedule we ought to stay on is trying to move forward, we're going to do the hot mix in September, but let's move forward with a structural engineer, no later than starting in October, if we can do so, please. And then if you can report back to us, maybe in October on next steps, we can do that as a consent item. Does that make sense, Garrett? Okay. Does that work for you all, just to hear where we're going?
Yeah, it's very helpful. Because we make sure that one of our residents of our street...
Can we ensure that when the engineer comes out, a couple of the residents are notified, so we can at least explain the situation where the water's coming out and stuff like that?
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Okay, so Garrett, can you contact the folks who submitted the petition when we do that, and then they can decide who that...
Do you want to be that guy, John?
Mike, Mike want, Mike might want to be, and I can be that guy, too.
Okay, well, all right.
You can be the alternate.
All right, let's have these two folks, Garrett, did you get those names down? All right, thank you. So thank you all, appreciate your patience. We have to take a look at the agenda now. So, it's, it's 10:30, and we were supposed to review the agenda at 10 o'clock. Excuse me, folks, could you please exit quietly? We're still moving on with this agenda. Please exit quietly. Please exit quietly, thank you, we still have other items. So we want to look and see if there's any items that we want to continue. My thoughts are, we only have two more items, and I say we go for it. I think everybody agrees, so we're going to stay with where we are. But I would like to say one thing. We've gotten a request to move item 21 before item 20, and that is for the ordinance dealing with the single-use foodware, so I would like a motion to move item 21 before item 20.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so that was Goddard and Ackerman, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, could, could somebody please ask those folks in the hallway to take a step out? So, we're moving on to introducing, and read by title only in ordinance, adding chapter 8.72 to, excuse me, to title eight of the Fairfax, I'm sorry, Fairfax Municipal Code Regulating Single-Use Foodware to Require Businesses to Use Compostable or Reusable Materials for Takeout Food, Sequel Exempt Per Sequel Guidelines, et cetera. So, Garrett, would you like to do the staff report, please?
Sure, maybe have some background. The Vice Mayor Goddard requested the town council consider this ordinance to prohibit food vendors from providing non-compostable, single-use food service ware. It's based on San Anselmo's ordinance, a similar type ordinance. Vice Mayor Goddard can indicate who she contacted from the business community in terms of this ordinance, but primarily, the primary provisions of this ordinance are reusable or compostable materials are required for dining or takeout foodware at food businesses in town, requires food vendors to charge 25 cents for disposable cups, takeout-to-go containers must be made of materials that can be composted or reused. Reuse is defined as heavy plastic containers that can be run through a dishwasher, foodware can be composed entirely of aluminum, no styrofoam, this would actually specifically ban styrofoam ice chests and coolers, as well as food service ware in town, that would probably affect whoever sells it, say, like a grocery store or something. No plastic straws, except on requests, no plastic bags, paper bags would be required to be used by the food vendors for the takeouts. There are some exemptions, you would have some hardship exemptions, I think it also has, of that hardship still existed, they could ask for extension of that hardship. The effective date here, we had it July 1, 2020, probably a little too soon, you might want to extend it to a year from whenever it's adopted, or pick some date in the future. I think what we did in the past, we attached some materials that Vice Mayor Goddard may want to go through, that kind of gives some ideas of the possible materials that can be used. Many Fairfax businesses may already use some of these products, obviously, the whole success of this ordinance will be the education outreach for a business program. I think what we're recommending is, previously, we had that grant from the Zero Waste JPA to do a flip lid audit, and what we do is repurpose that grant to help with the business outreach and education, which helps businesses understand how this works, what type of materials and products are out there they could use, and so on, but that's probably a step further beyond at this point, which is more of discussion of the councils, any changes or whatever you have, or questions you have on the ordinance, and I believe Vice Mayor Goddard probably has some comments she'd like to share with the council.
I do, but before I start, Garrett, I'm going to take this, this moment and actually just ask a question that I have a concern about, and that is that in definitions, we have not captured what, what I thought we did under compostable, as definitions of compostable, in terms of what's required by, what's accepted by Earth Care, to define compostability. I don't know what happened to it.
Oh, you meant something different?
So forgive me, council, I, I want to make sure that we're...
So different from accepted by the town's municipal compost facility?
So under the definitions of compostable, you have ESTM or something like that?
Yeah, no, exactly, conditions for compostability or fluorine free, and accepted by the town, okay. All right, that'll cover it, it wasn't the definition that I thought we were putting, but it, but it works. Okay, thank you for your patience. Yeah, Garrett gave a, a great introduction to this, this has been long in the works. I've worked very closely with a great group of folks, Chance Cotronno is one of them, on a Sierra Club formed subcommittee called Plastic-Free Marin, and went through about a year of iterations and different, different considerations of many different ordinances, from Berkeley's to San Francisco's, to Alameda, to Malibu, to bring this together and make this ordinance, taking the best pieces from those and making them most appropriate for our community. So what you see before you is that, I think we've had introductions, we've had student, high school students come and give us presentations, I think we all know the crisis that we're facing in terms of plastics. I just read yesterday in the paper that they found microplastics in Lake Tahoe. We know all of the horror stories about microplastics in our breast milk, and we know that it's in all of our skin products, we know that it's coming out of the lint trays in our dryers, and we can't avoid it, but we can do something about it, and that's the one thing that we don't seem to want to do, and that is to stop consuming it. So what I've seen over time is that it takes a two-pronged effort, one is a grassroots effort, which has been made and is being made constantly, to change people's behavior, and that can be debated forever as to how you do that, and whether it's possible or not, and the other is that sometimes we just have to make rules. The plastic bag ban in Fairfax in 2008 was nothing other than a community celebration, in my mind. Great partnering with the Good Earth, they had a campaign called BYOB, Bring Your Own Bag, and everything built on that, and a lot of people got together and made music videos and did all kinds of things, and then I do not believe there was a pain in any business bone getting that bag ban through and making it a, a new norm, so, and it did involve a charge. So anyway, what you see before you is this ordinance, India just did it, even San Anselmo did it, and they did it first, they got to go through the pains of making it better and better and better, and so here it is. And if anyone has any questions, if it's okay, Garrett, I, I would be, I'd be happy to answer those questions, and then I know there are a few wonderful people in the, in the, in the crowd that would like to probably speak on this.
So is this the time to...
Just get some questions from any of my colleagues, and then...
Is this the time to ask questions, or should we hear from the public?
Just questions, and then we can comment.
So Bruce, maybe I should lead this, just ask questions right now, and then we'll open up to public comment, and you can ask your questions to Renee.
So, the one question I have, and this may be difficult to answer, because I imagine that there were a lot of multi-way negotiations with various merchants as to how this might go, so maybe this is out of one of those, but I just keep seeing the aluminum getting kind of a special treatment here. I'm assuming that the aluminum really refers to aluminum foil, like wrapping a burrito in aluminum foil, that's the main thing I think of, but maybe there's something else that's not coming to my mind. And I, I understand that that, as I recall, maybe I'm wrong, but I think that started with High Tech Burrito some years ago, that they wrapped their burritos in foil, and it was like a new thing at the time, and now everybody wraps their burritos in foil, it's just like, you couldn't eat a burrito without foil, in fact, ancient Aztecs probably wrapped their proto-burritos in foil. But the funny thing with foil is, it's like a kilowatt hour of electricity that's used to make that sheet of foil, and it hardly ever gets recycled, because of course, we all know that we don't want dirty foil in the recycling stream, and so, you know, I might be one of, maybe 1% of people in Fairfax who take my stupid foil and wash it off so I can recycle it, or just unwrap the burrito as I'm eating it so I keep it clean, but most people don't do that. So that's one question, is sort of what happens with aluminum, and I don't think there's anything we can do about it. I think you've done so much work on this, that my feeling is, we should, this is good as it is, and let's go for it, and we'll correct, improve it as we go, but... But kind of a related thing with regard to the foil not getting recycled is, how do you, what can you do, like with coffee shops? You see the situation all the time in our local coffee shops and everywhere else, where people come in to drink a cup of coffee. They get their cup of coffee in a to-go container, and even if it's a compostable to-go container, it's still going to be thrown away, but they aren't going. They're drinking their coffee right there, and then they throw it in the trash, and they leave. And so two things happen there. One is that we're using this container, which is, you know, disposable, to when we didn't really even need to use a disposable container. So trying to get the coffee shops to actually sort of default, the default behavior would be that you get your coffee in a cup, like back in the day, you know? And that if you said, oh, I actually want to go, and, oh, I didn't remember to bring my cup, well, then the not default behavior, the sort of only if you asked for it behavior is, oh, well, we actually have a cup back here that we could let you use, but we're going to have to charge you for it. But, I mean, that's the way things ought to be, and that is a behavioral change on the part of the coffee shops, to not just pour the coffee fast, 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 and not ask anybody what they're going to do with it, but actually make people, tell them, what is your intention here? Do you drink it here? Because we have cups, you know? And then a third sort of part of that whole cycle is the compost bucket, and the trash bucket, and the recycle bucket that's right there in the place, and the difficulties that merchants have with getting people, and you know Renee probably more than anybody else I know, what that's like, because you go through things at the Fairfax Festival, and you try to get things in the right buckets, and it's frustrating. But yep, those are my main three thoughts, is just how does that whole flow? What else can we do to address making that flow work better?
Let me just be laser. So foil, I'm sorry you don't like foil. It is, at this time, the most recyclable and recycled thing that we have if people are absolutely dead-set on taking something to go. So I'm not going to fumble with that. The best thing you can do if you do end up with foil is give it a rinse and then put it in your recycling. Yes, it's energy-intensive. Yes, it's water-intensive to do all of that, but it's as good as we have right now. In terms of three-bin systems, there's a requirement for a three-bin system in our businesses that actually do, that do produce compost. I see this ordinance, one thing positive, one of the positives is that it's an opportunity to work with the businesses. We have a mandatory commercial recycling and composting ordinance, which is more stringent than any of the others in the county for sure, and more stringent than most places. So all businesses have to have, are mandated, not just if they create four cubic yards or more of landfill waste. Anyway, not going there. But yes, it's an opportunity to do that, and it's a major opportunity to work with the businesses in terms of changing the way they just automatically hand out the to-go stuff. Unfortunately, the tax structure is not on our side, because when you take a cup to go, you don't pay tax. And if you have a cup for here to stay, you pay tax. It's not on the environmental side of things. But that's not, the opportunity is to teach and to set up structures for people so that they start to bring their own cup.
Thank you. Would somebody else like to ask questions? Renee, John?
Yeah. The first one's about PLA, which is, you know, it's a corn or starch-based plastic. Yes, it composes, but only in a certain situation. Is that the only thing that you can coat a paper product with? I guess that's the industry norm, because it's quote "compostable," but you can't compost it. So is that a reaction to the industry norm, or is that at all practical?
At this time, what we have to work with is PLA, or plastic. And part of this ordinance states that if you're using something which is not compostable, and there is no alternative to that product which is actually composted at our Earth Care facility, then you can use whatever you want, because they're both trash. So we're not going to mandate that people take one bad thing and exchange it for another until we find a better way, and they are coming. So these companies are getting it, that master composters, no matter whether their haulers take it or not, they don't want it. So products will get better, and they will be able to be composted. But the point of this ordinance is to stop disposing of things.
Yeah, I totally get it.
But in the meantime, we have struggled with this, and at this point, we couldn't find another way. I think Al might speak to this in a moment.
Yeah, okay. Well, that was my question about PLA, and I guess I saw it coming, but I had to ask. On the subject of foil, yeah, paper works great. Wax paper works great going around a burrito. I mean, and, you know, and it's really hard. I mean, why wrap a burrito in foil if you've got to carefully unfold it and straighten it out and unwrap it, and then have a wet burrito in your hand that's unwrapped so that you can save a piece of foil, which is, you know, a big waste of electricity and blah, blah, blah? I mean, it's way easier, you have the big pile of shreds of foil when you eat a burrito. That's basically what happens. So nobody's going to recycle that foil. So my opinion is right there with Bruce on that, and yeah, this is, you know, trying to work out the plastics part, but I think foil is worthy of putting attention to, and maybe it's when we rewrite this ordinance, when they figured out a different thing to PLA, but I'd rather do it sooner and deal with foil. The paper cups that are ubiquitous, that, who knows how many paper cups get tossed at the corner cafe? Yeah, if you're charging a quarter, you're going to make it cheaper to pay the tax for people. And so that's driving it on that end, the consumer end of the deal. But if you look at what it takes for somebody selling, you know, we'll use the cafe thing, but there's a lot of other situations where people are using to-go containers and using them, but cafe is the perfect example. For that merchant selling a coffee, it's a lot easier. Just pull that cup, set it down, there it is. You know, they don't have to wash anything later. It takes labor to wash it, and you've got to move them around. It's work. I mean, it's, yeah, they got to take garbage bags, plastic garbage bags full of paper cups out, one after the other, but that's easier than washing tons of cups and stocking tons of cups. And if you make it that they get a quarter every time they sell a paper cup, guess what? That's not going to change very much at all. So I think looking at that interaction and how that business works, making it work not just for the consumer to say, oh, I'd rather pay tax than pay a quarter, but make it work on both ends. I mean, you can't just have it push in one direction. You have to have it push and pull in that interaction. And so I think that's worthy of looking at it, that interaction more carefully.
I don't mean to butt in, but...
And I get some nods from a merchant in the audience.
Yeah, we should, I thought it was just questions, because I was...
Yeah, well, that's a question. I'm bringing that up as a question, and let's look at this, because I think that needs some attention. So other than that, I think...
Can I comment? I could comment on that quickly, is that the cup thing and the charge for the cup, it's not a tax, it's not a fee, it's a charge, has nothing to do with the tax piece in the to-go or the to-stay. It has to do with the customer remembering and choosing to bring their own cup.
Yeah, it's changing customer behavior.
The surveys and studies is...
They might bring their own cup, but...
Well, that's the goal. And they say 25 cents is the price point that actually changes...
Maybe it'll work.
Well, that's what's been studied, but yes, we have to see.
And it did work, as Renee mentioned, with grocery bags. It's astonishing how now you go into a store, and pretty much everybody around here, anyway, is, I don't know about in Kansas, but here, just about everybody brings their own bags. And I noticed in our family, there was this whole period of really figuring out, and we've been using bags since, our first bag was my daughter's diaper bag, and she's quite a bit older than that now. But the, really getting into the swing of having grocery bags with us all the time. So we have them sitting by our door, we have them in the car. It's like there's this whole flow of rebalancing the bags so that we just always have them with us. We don't have to plan that, oh, today I'm going to need a bag. We just, you know? So those kind of things, I think everybody is doing that all over with their grocery bags, and it's pretty successful. People are showing up at the store, they've got their bags. And so I think I see what you mean, that really the goal of this ordinance is to get that to happen, where instead of throwing things away, whether they're compostable, whether they're PLA, whether they're whatever, the whole throwing things away goes away, and instead we bring our own cup or whatever. That's...
Was that a question?
So let's move on to questions. John, are you finished with your questions?
I guess the only point that I would like to make in relation to that question, which is like, what about that, is cloth grocery bags pack down, and they don't break when you drop them on the floor, you know? And coffee cups that replace paper cups do.
So that's more comments, so let's move on to questions.
That is more of a comment, it's true, but it rounds it out, just saying.
Okay. Peter, would you like to ask any questions?
Sure, but I just wanted to say, my preferred way of eating a burrito is to unwrap it, use a knife and a fork. That way you can use the chips to clean up afterwards. No. So Renee, it looks like there is...
Okay, so let's move on, because we have people that are waiting to speak on this item, so I know this is fun.
This is scintillating, I know, for the people watching at home. So there is actually a program to certify what's compostable and what's not. And some of these products that you give as examples, are these currently readily available and certified as compostable and would be...
Yes.
And it is, just, I was really curious. One of them says it's made of sugarcane. Is it actually made of sugarcane?
Yes.
Okay.
I would ask Al to speak to it, because truly, Al is the expert in all of these materials and products.
And a question about the rollout in San Anselmo. Did, how much, did you get any feedback in terms of how much time vendors realistically would need as lead time to be able to stock up with compostable materials and go through their old stock and so forth? Just as a practical matter, I'm just wondering what kind of input we've got.
You know, I can come back with that. I think each business is so different in the way they're conducting their outreach and the way they're working with each business. They all have different considerations, everything from dishwashers to, you know, to actually finishing the stock that still remains, and they're, yeah. I don't know. There hasn't been anyone, I mean, the thing about what San Anselmo's doing is that they're really working closely with the community with their special concerns and their requests for, not exemptions, but for extended periods of time to actually come into compliance. They're working closely with them. So I don't know, but I can find out.
When did they pass their ordinance? I'm just wondering if they've had any bumps in the road as yet that we might anticipate?
I think it's more like March, right?
Was, mm, yeah, it's been done several times. They've done a first reading, a second reading, and then taken it back and done another first reading and a second reading. So I don't know. It was finalized this summer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions, Peter? So I have a question, and it's dealing with the outreach that has been done since you first brought this a while ago. I'd like to hear a little bit about the number of establishments that you've spoken to and kind of who they are. I mean, I think Good Earth is our model of, in many ways, what we want to do, but I also know that they have wonderful products, but they're also the most expensive grocery store that I know of in Marin County, and people love everything about them, so people are willing to pay even more money for things. And I think some of our other establishments, they don't have that kind of luxury. So I'm just wondering who you have spoken to over the last year? So we kind of get a sample. Just so you know, I spent about 20 minutes in Fairfax Market the other day, yesterday, and I saw a lot of stuff there that worried me. And they're more serving kind of the general community who might not be willing to pay a lot extra. So who kind of have you done outreach to, other than our friends at Good Earth, who are always our partners on these kind of things?
Just to say about Fairfax Market, they have been one of our business sponsors for sustainable Fairfax, for all of our zero-waste efforts. And so I look forward to working with them. I have not worked directly with them. I have spoken to the folks at Java Hut, who were very, actually very supportive and were here at the last meeting, and then, we didn't get to it. Gary Ngellies with the new Fairfax, he's very happy to work with us to comply. The coffee roastery has been really important, because the coffee roastery we have in both towns. And so Deb and Kelly are very interested in going to the highest level of this. There's a couple of things that they need to work through with cutlery, but we're working with them. And Taste, I've spoken with Taste, and they're really interested in doing it. They have, you know, there's issues around distributors and who they already use as their distributors, and how they're going to figure out how to get their distributors to carry the products that are actually accepted. I have, those are the four main people that I've spoken with. I've spoken with Iron Springs, who do a lot of takeout during the lunch hours. They're absolutely excited to do this. I have not spoken to M&amp;G's. So that's important.
Well, all right, so that's good to know. And when we bring it back, I'll talk to you about what I found at Fairfax Market, because I was just cruising around and seeing things that made me worry. But the other thing, I have a question on, so these attachments to the staff report have two pages of things that are accepted at our Redwood Landfill, and then there's a page of stuff that says compostable, and they're certified by ASTM and BPI, but they're not. And that means, I will just give you one little example. So I'm giving a party at somebody else's house, and they don't want me to use their dishes. So I got online looking, what could I buy that would be compostable? I swear, I must have spent over an hour looking at every picture on here, finding palm leaf, making sure that it didn't have any coating on it. And I was back and forth from all these pictures, trying to figure it out. So just for me, who tends to be a little bit intelligent, I had a really rough time. So what troubles me is ASTM is kind of, you know, people look to them of putting standards out there. I'm not familiar with BPI, but I looked them up online, and I'm guessing, because they say BPI-certified, that might be difficult. So I'm just kind of wondering, how easy is this going to be for people who want to make a good faith effort to really comply with this, and they think they're buying the right stuff, but they're not?
I hear your concern, and I think it's going to be really about how we support them and how we educate them. I can promise you that these products are becoming more and more ubiquitous. They...
Including the ones that Redwood Landfill doesn't do.
Well, the ones that Redwood Landfill doesn't take, it's because of the licensing and the organic certification that our WM Earth Care has.
They create compost, and they don't want that material.
Al, you would have to talk there, because no one can hear you.
We'll call you up in a minute, Al. You just wait.
So those are two different subjects, but I hear you, and it's very frustrating, and every single person that cares goes through this frustration. But it will... and every single person that cares goes through this frustration. But it will get easier. And it certainly is getting easier because the PLA companies who really, it's their main, it's, it's vital that they be BPI certified. They are figuring out products that these smaller compost facilities can take, which is the only way we're going to do this, as we turn from a disposable to reusable culture.
Okay. Well, those are all my questions. So with that, I think we should open it up to public comment. And does someone want to come up and speak? And we are giving three minutes for speakers, but for Al, we'll be asking you questions. So you'll get a little more time.
All right. Appreciate all of your time and all your work, all of you. Thank you. I don't have anything really organized to say. I'd certainly accept some comments. I'm Al Balak from Good Earth Natural Foods, if anybody doesn't know. Yeah, there has to be a behavioral change here and we saw it with bags and we should try to have some change around human behaviors, around things that we throw away. And I think a cup is a good next step. We, we at Good Earth, we're not sure if 25 cents is enough. We're, we're actually even contemplating for, like currently, right now, any, any throwaway container is a buck. Doesn't matter if it's a cup or a box or a, you know, a big box, small box, but just something that creates the change of behavior. And, you know, we, what we do with that money, we've talked about also and tried to discuss, you know, trying to give it back to folks that can't pay a buck and, you know, and trying to, trying to work those things out with the money. I don't like the idea that it's, or maybe, you know, when you had it, where the incentive is for the business to collect and, you know, have the customer pay for the container and, and put it in their pocket. That's not what, I don't think that's what this ordinance is about and this whole movement around changing behaviors is about or should be about. There's an awful lot of education that needs to happen, I think, with this ordinance in Fairfax and San Anselmo. For that matter, I'm sure there, the majority of business owners likely have not done what I've personally done, maybe Renee has done. Barbara, you've gotten into it over the party, but just looked into the complexity of this issue. And you start to weigh the, weigh the issues. You're, you start spinning. You just don't know what is, you know, you think you finally get it and then, and then Redwood landfill decides that they cannot take a compostable product that is actually certified. And then you're, you step back and it's like, what am I missing? What did I miss? And, and it's the liner, the plastic thin liner that's in the coffee cup is why the landfill won't take it, you know. And so there's, it's a complex issue. There's lots of education that needs to be done. And I would think, I think the chamber here in town has a role to play with really trying to help and support the business folks that I'm, I'm imagining, you know, it's in our, it's our world. That's where we're living in it. We've been living in it. I've been living in it for, you know, decades now. But I'm sure there's people that don't have the time and the willingness to really take it on and understand it. So this ordinance goes through, I think, the focus of education and support for the business community needs to, needs to be in place or needs to be the focus. The fact that there's a lack of compostability of items out there, meaning that there are composters now that are not taking what they used to take, you know, this whole movement towards PLA, polylactic acid, plant-based plastics. There, there are composters, I know of one in Oregon, that just announced that they refuse to take the material anymore because it really degrades the compost itself. And that compost is going out on crops and sometimes out on organic, certified organic cropland. And so it's really important for the end user to feel good about their compost. And the compost companies have shifted their taking this stuff. It is, it's still certifiable, certifiable, compostable, but the, the polymers that are in place, they don't, they don't work well with soil in the end. And so I really don't think it's an answer. And I think that's why, you know, reuse of a container, coffee cup, or a plate, or a fork, is really the ultimate answer to this problem. And I, I have some vision around the town of Fairfax, doing maybe even greater Fairfax and Anselmo, and all the restaurants and the stores participate with a common or common like containers, you know, maybe there's four, five, six different containers that are made of reusable glass or metal. And, and there's a, there's a townwide system or multi-town system of use. They end up back being washed at a facility, not necessarily at the stores and restaurants themselves. And then there's a redistribution of those containers. I think there's a business there. I'm kind of anxious at the moment to try to figure out if it will be economically viable.
Hey, thank you, Al. So before you sit down, or maybe we should hear from the rest of the public, and then we'll potentially ask you up for more questions. By the way, I would encourage you to contact the chamber and see about becoming a member of the board. They're really hurting. And I think with Good Earth being a part of the board, you can really steer them in a good direction.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So Chance, did you want to speak or? I'm, I'm, I'm not picking favorites, just whoever wants to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Chance Catrano and I am here as a Fairfax resident, but also with Sierra Club Marin Group. As Renee kindly mentioned, a number of brilliant people throughout the county have been working for about two years to come up with something that's leading edge. There've been a lot of great efforts throughout the state. And, I mean, I'm, I'm really proud to see this here tonight because there are folks tracking this throughout the state. And what was done in San Anselmo, that's as, as good as it gets right about now. And to have Fairfax come out and lead this as well for the, for the region, for the state, for the country, it's exactly what we should be doing, right? You know, it's exactly why everybody's elected to, to make these types of big decisions that are going to create that mind shift, that are going to get us off fossil fuels as quickly as possible. Ocean Conservancy just came out with a study in 2018, nine of the 10 things that were found on beaches the most were, were food and drink service ware items made of plastic. And this is just another one of those key cumulative actions that we can take that's going to add up to getting rid of problems like that for future generations. And I'm, I'm just really pleased and on behalf of the, the entirety of the Sierra Club Marin Group, over 6,000 members here in Marin, I'm very supportive of this action. And I, I thank you all for your leadership. And, you know, to Mr. Toy's point about January 2020, whether or not it's soon enough, I, I think it couldn't come any sooner. I think it could have been tomorrow.
It's not January. Right now it's July 2020.
Even, even that, I mean, that's, that's even further away. But to, to take those funds from Zero Waste Marin and to repurpose them like San Anselmo has for really working with the community and working with the chamber and working with dedicated business owners that want to take this lead, it, I think that has to happen and it has to happen as soon as possible because there's, there's no time like the present. And the longer we wait, it's really, you know, just dallying. So I think we have the solutions now and we have the energy and we need to implement it. And Sierra Club is totally behind it and we're willing to do whatever we can to support this initiative in Fairfax and beyond in Marin County. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chance. Richard, did you want to speak on this item?
Just very briefly, first of all, I support it. So please vote for it. And just my quick comments are just that, you know, as human beings, we're extreme creatures of habit and we resist changing anything that we're just used to and it's going to be a pain in the ass. And I like that Fairfax, our town, is a place that we're going to kind of push the envelope a little bit on that. And sitting here tonight, listening to all the wonderful comments, I'm thinking, I want to start carrying my own fork and knife with me in my car or whatever, you know. And it's like not even deal with it. And I would make a comment since Good Earth is in the, in the building, that I just was thinking about some of my own habits there when I get the prepared food and the hot food and stuff. And many times when people are eating there, they just put it on a plate. There's the glass plates and bowls and it seems great, you know, enough to use any materials. But I shy away from that because I don't like the feeling of walking through a giant facility in the open air with people breathing and coughing and whatever. And I don't want that stuff getting on my food. And so what occurred to me tonight is, and I don't say we have a solution for it in five minutes, but we probably need some better tools that are things that aren't from the materials and that are the reusable things that are geared toward this line of thinking now. So maybe there's like a little lid thing that could go on my glass, whatever, you know, so that I feel safe with my food. And I always order it to go things, even when I'm going to eat not to go. And I was thinking about, you know, get, use a real coffee cup again. And I'm like, why don't I do that? Or why don't I bring my own thermos down or whatever? And so I think this is great. I love that we can be leaders, leader, show some leadership on that. And if Sierra Club is saying that there's eyes on this, you know, around the country, all the better. And so I support it.
Thank you, Richard. Wendy, would you like to speak on this item?
Hi, Wendy. I'm, I'm too tired to be that coherent, but I just, I've been, like, it's been forever since I've, like, this has been an issue to me since high school or college. And it was a long time ago. And I think the easier you make it for people to change their habits, the better. And providing, like, making it easy to buy alternative bags has, has helped people. I also think that making to-go containers in a way that people bring them to restaurants or to Good Earth or places like that, where you, you just use your own thing and you take it home and you wash it and you just put it right back. It's no big deal to put things right back in your car or your bicycle or whatever and just have it. And that's what you use and that's normal. So I think the more that we, we can ask businesses to provide things that maybe people can get with their logos or whatever, I don't know, the, the easier it is for people to change their habits. And I also think that straws have been demonized in this whole thing, especially in the last year. And of course, the less plastic, the better. But I also know that I've been a, I was a big part of the languaging around including disabled people and, and all the thinking around this. And that sometimes people think alternatives, the same alternative works for everybody and that's not always necessarily true. So it has been a big issue in the disability community that plastic straws are going to be gone. And for some people, that really is the only thing they can use at this time because the proper alternatives have not come, come about. And I know people complain a lot about the, the paperish kind of straws. And I think the more that we make things that are just not that user friendly, the more people aren't going to use them and they're going to want to, you know, use things that we don't necessarily prefer environmental wise. So just thinking about the whole entire process of how, how we create change and what works better in the long term for people as far as usability goes. So thanks.
Thank you. Mallory?
I need, I need an hour. Is there, is it, is it possible to have a coffee to go as an ordinance for the people who are, who are owning the coffee shops? I have to ask for a for here cup every time. I have to stop them from giving me a to-go cup. And I think, I think it's really important for the owners to start giving you a for here cup unless you ask for it and then pay. I think, Al, a dollar is too much, but I know it's a Good Earth price thing. But I think 50 cents or a quarter would probably cover it. We, we don't use any more of the compostable corn things for, is that, that's true, right? Nobody takes them here. So I don't know why people still have them, right? The, the
The
The plastic
Vegetable plastics.
Meaning by per, per ordinance?
Where we are here. What?
Where we are with the ordinance, you mean?
Well, no, I mean, we don't have a place here
Oh, you mean to compost them?
To compost them. So why even have them? Because people are throwing them in the compost and I keep saying it's not compostable and
Well, as part of this ordinance, they won't be
Good. The Good Earth, I've been for two years trying to get them to get the plastic pizza dough. Hi, Al. Yeah, out of the plastic and do the, you know, a dollar fifty deposit for the mason jars. And it just doesn't happen. So I'm hoping it could happen now, Al. Good, good. All right. We'll see what happens for the next meeting you show up at. All right. Because they sell a lot of this pizza dough in eight ounce, eight inch square containers. And I'll pay for the, for, I don't buy the pizza dough anymore because they won't let me put it in my own container.
Don't pick on Al.
I will pick on Al. I've been, for two years, I've been trying to get him and Mark to do this. I'm picking. Okay, you don't have to. I think also that the plastic bags, hi, Al, at the, at the veggie, people should pay for them. They should pay for them at the, in the vegetable department as well, if they want a plastic bag to put. And you could, you could sell the mesh ones there next to them if people want to buy them. Just saying. I was, I, I think it's a really good idea to put Spanish and pictures on the recycle bins because what I have found, the people in the Latino community, it, it's not as important for most of them as it is for us. And I've brought this up to Patty and I think if we put bilingual signage on it, it may be helpful to do that. I, I go to the stints a lot and I carry a bag and I, I, today I brought back a pound of plastic tin foil wrappers from things, pieces of plastic, little pails for kids. It's just, it's, it's horrible what people are leaving on the beach and they're all, they're all, many of them are containers in plastic bottles.
So Mallory, could, thank you for all your comments. I think we're at four minutes?
I, I needed an hour, but
No, you're not getting an hour. So let's wrap it up.
All right. In terms of the aluminum, I think it's great if we can rewash them and recycle them. And people need to know that, that, that you can just keep using the stuff. One more thing, all the plastic containers at the Good Earth, can we do something else with them to, to sell the sandwiches and the foods and the other things?
Thank you, Mallory.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Did anyone else want to speak on this item? Bringing it back, if anyone has any specific questions for Al, he's still here. He's tough. Peter, did you have a question for Al?
Yeah, Alf, if you don't mind. So PLA is just, those are, it's a non-toxic kind of lining, but it doesn't biodegrade for purposes of composting or
I don't know about the toxicity. It, I mean, it's compostable. It will break down in a, in a industrial compostable system, compost system. The, the end product now doesn't have as many avenues out there. That's the Oregon connection, right? Because of this polymer that, it's like, it breaks down 98% of it. But there's still, you know, the bio, you know, we know of bio, what we know of plastics being, microplastics being everywhere. It's the same situation with these same types of polymers, the, the stuff that holds the material together. Pretty tough to create something that is very compostable and doesn't have a residue.
And I'm curious, the, so your to-go cardboard containers at the, you know, salad bar and breakfast bar, where I habitually go for my scrambled eggs in the morning.
Non-compostable.
Those are, those are compostable?
They are not compostable.
They're not? Okay.
Nope. Not at Redwood landfill.
And do those have PLA linings or?
That has a PLA lining. You might have noticed a switch that we just did. We, we moved away from a wheat straw package that did not We moved away from a wheat straw package that did not have the liner on it, but we have come across the fact that it had the polymers in the slurry when they create, they create the slurry and then they create the forms of the packages. So although we couldn't see it, we thought it was an answer. Redwood Landfill loved the container in terms of it breaking down. So we, but there's a toxicity to that. It's worse, it's a higher level of toxicity in that wheat straw product. So we went back to the lined box that is not compostable.
Is there an alternative?
Because of health reasons.
Is there an alternative for that kind of container or...
We haven't found one, and we're, you know, we're really frustrated with this issue overall, and which is, you know, the dollar comment, you know, we're trying to, we're just trying to, you know, figure out some change of behavior. People bring your own, what's it going to take? If, you know, there's the health department issue also. So people bringing things in from their homes or from the outside and, you know, how far do we allow them to use that? You know, a cup of coffee under, that's probably okay from a, you know, a transmission of germ issue, but handing your own container over the counter, you know, and have it filled up by a staff person, that, I think, crosses some lines, some health department lines. So they have to be involved, too.
Are the coffee cups, you use, they're lined, are they lined with PLAs as well?
Yep, yep.
So, so none of the Good Earth coffee cups would be acceptable under our ordinance?
Well, that's true. I mean, the eco container has this, it's a relatively new liner that I'm unclear if it's passed the ASTAM code or not.
You know, what I want to make sure is clear is that, that part of the reason, even if there is a polymer that can theoretically be breaking down at the Redwood facility, we don't allow cups of any kind because people don't know the difference. So if you look at someone trying to figure out if it's PLA and whether they should throw it in their compost versus the coffee roastery cup, which is plastic lined, they don't know. Some more insanitary said, no cups.
No cups at all.
Because otherwise the systems get all gummed up.
Right, right.
So at this point, until things become really clear and people like you can say confidently, no cups.
Yep.
So vendors, go ahead and use whatever cups you want right now.
So what...
Right.
Unfortunately.
What I'm getting at, our ordinance says, you know, there's a 25 cent charge for every non-compostable disposable cup. So every disposable cup is non-compostable, it sounds like, at least as of now.
It's any to-go cup.
So, okay.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions for Al? And it's not necessary, if you don't have any questions for Al, no need to ask. Okay, so let me bring it back to the council for discussion, really deliberations, and hopefully we can move forward. Al, thank you, we still want you to stay.
May I please make two more points, and then I will stop?
Okay.
And what should be called out is where the ordinance addresses fluorinated chemicals because what has been found is that there are fluorinated PFOAs in almost all to-go ware. So this ordinance requires that products not have these fluorinated chemicals. Unfortunately, even the very best of the very best has something because it's the liquid lock. It's what keeps things, pure paper uncoated, from just spilling out. But World Centric, which is one of the leading bioplastics producers at this point, is working on it, has promised within the next year that they will be, for all intents and purposes, ridding their products of fluorinated chemicals. But it is called out in here, just as San Francisco's is, and that is leading edge. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that the third-party business opportunities for these reusables to work regionally, there's actually a task force which I'm sitting on that looks at it regionally, not just county. They are piloting this in Berkeley, and it basically is a deposit system. It's all digitalized, you've got your code, your QR bar, you check it in, you check it out, you can drop it off at the roastery and then take it to San Francisco and then come home and drop it off at the Fairfax or it's a whole circuit of reuse. So those are coming. Great business opportunity, actually.
Okay, John, did you want to talk?
Yeah, and I'm sorry to say that, but you'll love this, Barbara. I actually have a question, not a deliberation.
We had an opportunity to ask questions before.
So, well, you know, I...
All right, go ahead.
Okay, in section 872070, private schools are exempt from this section.
That's from the cup, that's from, the private schools are exempt for the cup issue, for charging for the cup. They're going to charge the kids 25 cents for a cup?
Why not have reusable cups?
I think it's, the idea is that we don't want them to, I've had that question, too, when I was reviewing it, but I noticed it was for selling the cups.
Okay, well, maybe I wasn't, I was cramming for the thing too much.
Okay. So would people like to start, you know, it's 11:30. It would be, it would be good. All right, so just a reminder, folks, we have an 11:30 rule, so let's do that now. So the 11:30 rule says that any matter not started by 11:30 will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule.
I think we should suspend the rule.
Okay, before you just say, I think we should do that, let's have actually a real motion.
I move that we suspend the 11:30 rule.
Okay.
Second.
Who seconded? I didn't hear. Peter?
I did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we are powering on, and we will get to Ben's item as well. So with that...
I have one very small comment on the ordinance and then otherwise to say, I love it.
Okay, well, go ahead.
And that's on page eight, paragraph that starts with B seems to be indented. That whole thing is indented, I suppose. It shouldn't be indented. It was a little confusing at first.
Okay, so Bruce, I'm not sure, page eight, you found it? Okay, okay, well, thank you. Nothing else, Bruce?
No, I think so.
Okay. Okay.
I had...
Okay, Peter, go ahead.
So...
Okay, Bruce, if you're not speaking, let Peter speak.
Thank you. I want to go back to burritos, no. So I...
Some of us don't even eat burritos. Let's move on from the burrito.
So the time, you know, is nine, again, are we comfortable that nine months is enough time to not?
I'm not. It's not actually nine months by the time it takes effect. So if you think...
Well, what we're, as a practical matter, if, this would have a second reading, so it would be going to affect 30 days thereafter. That's why I'm saying it would be nine months because then by...
It's July 1, so that's wouldn't be nine months, it'd be about seven months.
But it would be enacted in November, so that's like nine months from enactment to...
It's actually seven months if you look.
Whatever. Is that enough time for, as a practical matter, again, I just want to put it out there for...
I personally do, I think we should go longer than that based on some of the things I'm going to bring up, but maybe we can just see what other folks, I don't think we need to go a whole year, but I think we need to go a little bit longer.
Yeah, so, and I'm, that's a concern of mine. I don't have a fixed opinion, but I just see that as a potential issue to maybe give it a little bit more leeway for our businesses, but I could be maybe persuaded otherwise. But I had one suggestion on the disposable cup charge and maybe to add some language that the 25 cent charge shall be prominently displayed at the point of sale and on any menus. I don't know if that's in there, but it would be good to just make it really clear so that, you know, because it's a perverse incentive for the business to just, you know, charge the 25 cents in pocket. But if we want to change behavior, I think we need to put it out there really prominently.
Maybe you can tell us where you would like that changed because we are doing a first reading hopefully tonight, so if you can give us, like, specifics, staff can take that down.
Yeah, I would put it, I would put it between paragraph D and E.
What page are you on?
Section 8.72.070 on page seven.
Okay, so between D and E, what would you say?
I would propose language to the effect of all food vendors shall prominently display the extra charge for disposable cup, non-compostable disposable cups prominently at the point of sale and on any menus. So that would be my proposed language for that.
Okay, Garrett, did you get that? Garrett, did you get that?
I think pretty close.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm open to some wordsmithing if you have something better. And Janet is, wrote a legal treatise on takeout ware, so if, no, I'm kidding.
Okay, so anything else, Peter?
That's all. Yeah, thank you, Renee, for bringing this forward.
And thank you, Peter. John?
Yeah, I mean, if we're not going to roll foil into this...
I think we can take a foil in another year.
Yeah, it's another, I agree, it's another different subject. I, you know, I think it's a pretty good ordinance. I mean, yeah, it doesn't do everything, and there's unresolved issues, and we're going to have to revisit this as industry changes. But I think it's pretty good. So, thank you, Renee.
Okay, well, great. So I have a few things, and because I was only asking questions before, I didn't bring some of these things out, but a couple of things. I spent some time at Fairfax Market last night, and one of the things I'm kind of wondering about is Sustainable Fairfax has done tours through Fairfax Market, so I'm hopeful that you guys would have seen these sorts of things. But I walked through one aisle and I saw polystyrene ice chests, which I don't really think you can get anywhere else. And I think Fairfax Market serves a little different community than Good Earth. A lot of folks from West Marin, a lot of folks who may not, I think Good Earth is very welcoming and friendly, but for some people, it's not for them. So they serve a lot of our community and beyond, and they don't have the idea of maybe spending significant amounts of money on every item that they buy. But I also found, I walked through the picnic area, and I saw lots of, I actually called Garrett to tell him what I was seeing. So I found polystyrene cups.
Technically, you texted me. No, you called me.
I called you.
Three times.
I found polystyrene plates. I found paper plates that looked kind of cool, but they were all coated. And then I found those really neat compostable cups in a box that look compostable, but they're not, and they're that vegetable stuff. And so I looked at that and I thought, wow, you know, I don't know how much product these guys have. And I think we can always work towards getting them more online, but that's why I kind of asked about outreach because I think they're so critical to this, making this work, and they have been really great partners for our town, just like Good Earth, in a different way. The other thing I noticed, as I stop in there every now and then, is a few months ago, they started this, I think a new business for them, which is a lot of take-and-go food. And a lot of people that work in town stop off and grab one of those take-and-go for little pieces of chicken and all kinds of things that they have in a hot area. Then they created this whole chiller area where they have a lot of take-and-go foods, like hard-boiled eggs, all in plastic. And my worry, more than getting rid of the product they have in the picnic area, because I think that's a little easier with a little bit of education, is how are they going to have that area? Because people do not want to wait in the deli. That's not an option. They're not going to be hiring a lot of people like we see at Good Earth. But how are they going to be able to continue to have that business, which really serves a lot of the community? Because as far as I know, there's nothing that's kind of see-through that you can have in a take-and-go area. So to me, it's really critical that they have time to work through that, and we really work with them on it. It's not a matter of just saying, hey, you can't do it, and buy this thing. And people want to just grab it, they want to see what it is, they don't want to talk to anybody, and they don't have lots of staff running around. So that's my concern there. And the other thing is, I'm really concerned about the outreach we want to do on this. I wonder what kind of firm we'll get. I had hoped that Sustainable Fairfax was doing this all along, and I know there was, you know, there's limits there, it's how much they can do. But I talked to the woman in San Anselmo who just sent us a note, and I asked her what firm they used and how much they cost. And she said they used some firm for $35,000, and that covered five establishments. Well, she got back to me, I mean, I think we can follow up on that and we can look into that, but my concern is...
So can I just, just for the record, that they hired Rethink Disposables, and they hired them for 35, but it's for the entire town.
She said five establishments.
They've worked closely with five at this point, but that is for the entire town.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Which is quite a bit bigger and way more businesses, and they're dealing with United Market and Pete's Coffee, and so they have a whole different scope.
They have a lot more than we do, so my worry was they were doing a very small thing. So I think we need to really get on that. My push would be to change the date to September 1, 2020, that because there hasn't been, we have a lot of regular Joe kind of businesses here, and I think we need to talk to Perry's, we need to talk to some of these smaller organizations. Taste has changed hands. I don't know if you talked to the new folks? Okay, great.
Oh, no.
No, that's not Taste, they're Fairfax. Okay, so I think I would like to give us a little more time for folks to get on board. I don't want us having a lot of people asking for exemptions. It'd be great if we hit the ground running sooner than September 2020, but let's give us a little more time. The other thing that I would like to change is on the enforcement. So moving on to the end of the ordinance, on page nine, it says, under D, any violation of the provisions of this ordinance is hereby declared a public nuisance, and so shall be subject to abatement in the manner set forth in Title I. Well, I remember the one abatement hearing we did, that I think after all was said and done, we spent about $500,000 on that, and that was for a very significant type of thing. What I would like to see us do is administrative citations. And one of the things I did when I was at the Air District with the wood smoke enforcement is our goal with compliance, which I think is our goal here, is why not do something where we use administrative citations? The first citation is something like $100, but you have the option of taking a little test. And that test could be, maybe Sustainable Fairfax could put it together, 20 questions, and you could have the materials. Because your goal is, you want people to learn how to do this. You don't want to hit them over the head. So this is what I did with our wood smoke. We did a wood smoke school. The first citation was $100. People could take an online test. We don't have to do that, we can do paper. And they had the option, they could pay the citation or they could take the test. Most people took the test. And we knew that by taking that little test, they learned. And that's my goal in making this happen. The second citation was more money, like $200. And the third was something like 500. We really didn't get to that point, but I'd like us to go from this, really, compliance is the key, not hitting people over the head. So I would rather we change D to make it administrative citations, and we can come up with a program that would allow... and we can come up with a program that would allow us to really seek compliance and work with people, because these are also part of our community. Were you waving your hand for a reason, Janet? Okay, what would you like to say?
So it's a really standard enforcement section. It includes administrative citations. It also includes public nuisance language. And that's to provide flexibility, so that you can pick whatever way of enforcement works in any particular situation. You throw everything in, you don't necessarily use all of it. You can pick and choose, it's just to provide flexibility.
Okay.
We do have administrative citations up here in B.
Okay.
That's there.
So my goal was kind of to get rid of the public nuisance, but you're saying you don't think we would really use that?
No, I mean, we try to have language in there that covers every type of situation we might encounter, but with this type of thing, you're gonna be using administrative citation.
All right.
I like the idea of sending them to compost school.
Well, that's what we did, what we talked about jokingly when we did our no organics in the landfill cart, that they'd go to garbage school with Renee, but we weren't able to do the lid flips. So we haven't gotten that far.
So I think that's different, but I think, I mean, really, we need to think about, the businesses in our community are our partners, and we want to help them get there. And not all of them are able to be the leaders that Good Earth is. So I really like, would like you guys, so I'm fine with the enforcement provisions. I would like to change the effective date to September 1, 2020. There's a couple of little typos in here that I pointed out to Garrett. For example, polystyrene and polystyrene foam just doesn't show up as a definition because there's a bold missing. So I already talked to him about that. But I really would like the folks implementing this, and I'm hoping Sustainable Fairfax is part of this, could really develop kind of the Smoke School approach or the Compost School approach, because we really want people to learn this, and we're missing out on opportunity if we don't offer that sort of option. We don't have to prescribe that in this document, but I'd like to see that we get a companion document like that. So my proposal is to make a couple of typo changes that I've talked to, to have Peter's one change, and then if we could consider changing the effective date to September 1, 2020. And my goal in that is not to pull out the pain, but to give so many businesses the opportunity to get there with us, rather than coming in and asking for exemptions.
Well, I appreciate all those comments. I think on Peter's as well, and I would agree with all of those. The idea that we should, that a school or that some sort of means of education is key, because that really is. The, I'm not sure about changing the date, but let me suggest an alternative to that. If, the only, the only problem I would see with making the date later is just that we might sit on it and nothing happened for a number of months. So probably most of the action will happen in the months preceding when the deadline is.
I'm hoping we, we're in charge of the outreach.
Why not get started on that? Right, that's what I was gonna say.
So why would we drag our feet when we want the outreach done?
We means who. So the question is, who's gonna do that? Is Sustainable Fairfax gonna pick up a lot of this work? Are they prepared to do this?
No, we're looking at a firm, it was in the staff report.
Yeah, to do the outreach. So if we can get started on that, and try to, and another possibility that I was gonna suggest might be that by some scheme, which I don't think we should try to invent right here, but some scheme to reward businesses who get going on this sooner. Like promote that, okay, these businesses have already gotten on board, they're already compliant with the law.
So if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Rethink Disposables has a whole certification program, which I would not recommend, to be honest, because I don't think our businesses need more stickers in their windows. But there are many ways to look at how to incentivize, how to assist, even how to, you know, give them mini grants through this money that we might have coming from the county, potentially. These are just ideas, but I wouldn't, Rethink Disposables, if we're even talking about working with them, which will, remains to be seen, has a structure for all of this.
And somehow just publicizing out in the world that, oh, another business has got it together. Great, yay for them. And then that gives people an incentive to move quicker rather than just saying, well, it's not for another year, so I'm not gonna worry about it for another six months, because, yeah, we should get going with it.
Okay.
I would prefer the date stay as it is. But that would be, that would be my preference, but I can live with it.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I think you've brought up some really important points on the workability of the grab-and-go stuff. And, you know, frankly, I don't have confidence that there's gonna be a solution at six months or at nine months for that. You know, maybe, I'd love to be proven wrong on that, but I think those are very legitimate concerns that you've brought up. And I hope there's a solution, because I don't see clear stuff that's recyclable.
So can I explain, though? Here's the point, here's the thing that makes this doable for businesses, is that if there isn't a clear alternative, a solution that Marin, that the compost facility can take, then they can continue to use their plastic. Because we can't mandate something that doesn't have an alternative.
Yeah.
So that's built into this ordinance. So I understand what you're saying.
Could you point out where that is? Because I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Yeah, yeah, that language is definitely in there.
It's in the definitions. That's why I started with that question to Garrett, to make sure that, because for some reason I wasn't seeing it. Compostable means that it's something that can be, that is acceptable by our compost facility.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's just a definition of compostable. That doesn't say that if you don't have it, you can use something else. So I don't see anything in the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, I remember reading that.
Can someone point out to me where it is? I would like to know where it is.
D 8.72.040, or D, I believe, is one place.
I can't hear what you said. What did you say?
872040, this is the beginning of page six. Paragraph D, that's one of the places where it is. I think it's also paragraph D in the next section as well.
In section 8.72100.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Significant difficulty and so forth. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, are you done, John?
Yeah, I mean, that's the concern. I mean, I don't know that extending the date out is gonna all of a sudden make it possible by three months.
I think we have to do quite a bit of outreach. And my concern, even if we get started right away, you know, just the fact that I spent an hour trying to figure out what was good, and I'm only buying one product. Well, they're not gonna be hand-holding them for hours, and there's only so much time. So what is your thoughts on the date?
Yeah, I'm kind of with Bruce on the date. I mean, I think pushing it back does kick it down the road. I mean, I think we've got to work on it. And the consultant is gonna be working on it, because, you know, whether it's Sustainable Fairfax or whether this is other firm, it takes that work.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I think on the balance, kicking it back a couple of months would be good, just as a practical matter. Because it's gonna take a while to engage someone, whether it's this firm that worked in Santa Anselmo or Sustainable Fairfax. And it just, it feels to me like that's a reasonable, another couple of months as a practical matter to be able to, for the businesses, to be able to, because they have to rethink some things. It's not just, oh, well, we can order, they have to figure out like what they're gonna have to order. And it, it just feels to me like that additional two months would be useful. And in the bigger scheme of things, you know, it's two more months of businesses not switching, but in the long, bigger picture, I think it's important to have that lead time. And then I was wondering too, just a question for staff, if we have a list of businesses that are licensed to sell food, takeout food, if it's possible to just, I don't know if we have a handy list, but just send out a letter saying, you know, this is going into effect, and direct them where it could be found. I mean, do that even before we engage, you know, an outside firm to do outreach. Because I think as much notice as possible to businesses is important, even if it's just a letter saying, hey, here's the new law. You can find it on our website. And that, just a suggestion. Do we have any kind of list of businesses like that? Is that a?
We could send notices out to everyone.
We need to send the notices out.
Yeah, I mean, we would do that.
It's part of the plan.
I guess we probably would just do that prior to the second reading of year and introduce it tonight. We'd send something out, we usually would attach the ordinance to.
Yeah, or have it ready to go, and then, you know, mail it out the day after.
I think the pictures of what you can take and what you can't take are very helpful. It's not just the ordinance. Having the pictures would be good.
The title on that first page, I still don't really understand why it says compostable when it's saying that here, where we live, they aren't. So I would change the title.
We could probably highlight that. Renee, did you want to weigh in on the timeframe?
You know, I hear what you're saying, and I want to do whatever we can to support the businesses. If it were that we were going back and forth about six months or something, I think it would warrant deeper consideration. I think for the two months, it does kick it down the road. I would rather stay with July 1st. I hear Chance, and the way he's saying, we don't even have five minutes left before we should do this. And I think that we're not gonna have, two months isn't gonna make it easier for the businesses than sticking with July 1st. So I would, I would propose we stick with July 1st and we get to work. And I do know and can connect with Rethink Disposables immediately. And also Sustainable Fairfax has this in our, as part of our plan, absolutely.
Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion? Now, remember, Peter made one change, and whoever makes the motion, maybe you should make the motion.
I would love to make the motion. But first, I would like to thank all you guys for coming. Al, thank you for enduring.
Yes, thank you.
The wrath of Mallory. And I would like to introduce and read by title only an ordinance adding chapter 8.72 to Title 8 of the Fairfax Municipal Code, regulating single-use foodware to require businesses to use compostable or reusable materials for takeout food. Sequo exempt per Sequo guidelines, sections 15061B3 and 15307 and 15308, with the amendment to the language and the addition that Peter Lacks made between D and E.
Actually, if you want me to clarify, it was the language, Councilmember Lacks added to the end of section 8.72.070D at the end, and I think I came close to add the sentence that would say, "All food vendors shall prominently display signage, which notices the disposable cup charge at the point of sale and on all menus."
Great.
Well-stated.
So, yes, thank you, Peter.
Did someone want to second that?
Second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none that matter passes. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Sure. And just want to tell you all that we've gone much later than this, so you're lucky we got to this before midnight.
What, is it two minutes?
Oh, we got, we.
We got another item?
No, we're not taking a break. Okay, so let's move on to, no breaks. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming. So the last item on our agenda is, excuse me, folks. No peanut gallery over here. Okay, so we've been waiting with bated breath for introduce and read by title only in ordinance to establish time limits for incomplete applications and project entitlement approvals by adding section 17.020.130, time limits extensions for design review. I'm not gonna read all this, but basically, we're looking at time limits for incomplete applications and project entitlement approvals. And there's a detail of the sections in the, actually, staff report. So Ben, we would like a very wonderful concise report from you tonight. And it is midnight.
It is. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for persevering to get to this item. So just very briefly, your council, this is part of the work program that was previously discussed and recommended by the Planning Commission and the council.
You might want to speak a little closer to the, I think your head's too turned. Sorry, Ben. I know you've got a presentation, so it's tough.
Yes.
Do you want to move up and do this from, like? Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Whatever you feel comfortable.
So the Planning Commission looked at this ordinance at two meetings, recommended pretty much the ordinance as proposed with some minor changes, which I'll get into at their July meeting. Your council discussed this at the August meeting. The last meeting. In terms of the specifics, and we don't need to spend a lot of time, what it essentially does is, the current ordinance has two problems. Is number one, it's inconsistent. Some type of applications have time restrictions, some don't. And the other problem is, it's not well-organized within the zoning ordinance. So there's different locations where it's slightly different worded. So what this would do is create a single location in the zoning ordinance whereby the time limits would be applied. It would create a consistent time limit for all these different type of discretionary applications and/or approved projects. And it's noted that the time limits would be 180 days for incomplete applications, could be extended for an additional year. It's one year for an approved project, and that could also be extended for an additional year. There is a shorter timeline for violation projects enforcement, alternatives, shall we say, wherein they have 60 days to complete it, and that could be extended for an additional 90 days, so essentially, five months to complete a project. That was something that your council had questions about. In terms of recapping the regulation, as noted, there is some inconsistency. Those are the specific types of ordinances which do or do not have time limits. The problem is, is that most projects involve multiple applications. So for example, if you have a designer view combined with a variance, who knows whether or not there would be a time limit? So this is part of our internal inconsistency that this regulation is hoping to resolve. At your, I said July 17th, I apologize there. That was August 7th council meeting. You requested some additional information and clarification regarding several things. One was the status of other Marin jurisdictions, and I won't go into the detail there. Suffice to say that a majority of Marin jurisdictions do have time limits, and those are detailed out in your staff report. Another question was in terms of outreach to the community. It was noted that this proposed regulation was specifically guided by the two architects on the Planning Commission. In addition, in the time since the August Town Council meeting, we have reached out to six architects and the Marin Builders Exchange. We did get one comment back from Morgan Hall in support of the regulations. Nobody else has bothered to offer comments insofar as a majority of Marin jurisdictions have time limits. I think it's kind of one of those, you know, status quo, no big deal type of things, but I'm just interpreting that might be reasons why they didn't bother to respond. Another question had to do with the effective date of the ordinance. Staff reported that the intention was that it would only take effect as of, to any project as of the date of the ordinance. In other words, there wouldn't be any clawback to say, oh, this one application's been incomplete for nine years, so we're gonna write them a letter and say they're expired. We did clarify that in the, with some new language, which we ran by our town attorney's office. So that is now clarified, that it would only start the timeline as of the effective date of the ordinance, which in this case would be October 4. of the ordinance, which in this case would be October 4th, 2019. So rationales, as noted, it resolves inconsistencies. It also avoids, or at least minimizes misunderstandings about which regulations apply. You can imagine, one of our incomplete applications is nine years old. So, you know, we change our codes regularly, so the likelihood that there would be somebody who went under a certain set of circumstances is avoided with a more current situation. And it also, as noted by all of your council members who've been into our office, would help to start to resolve our storage issue. So with that, staff recommends the introducing the ordinance for its first reading and is prepared to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for all the thorough background work in response to all our direction last time. So does anybody have any questions for staff on the council? Peter?
Ben, just to clarify, so that one application that's been hanging out for nine years, so this would go into effect, and then that application would have, that applicant would have, you know, a year or two finish the, complete the building permit?
Well, in this case, it's an incomplete application, so they would have 180 days. We would write all the incomplete applicants, which this is one of them, that they have 180 days to complete their application. If there were some circumstance that we believe would extend it out, you know, to its 10th year, we could theoretically allow for an extension of an additional year.
Right, but all the stale applications as of the date this is passed, they'll get a letter telling them that this is a new timeline.
Yes, we will notify, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Just questions?
Well, just a, I had a question earlier, and I asked Garrett, and he answered it, but just to share with you the answer and, I guess, ask whether you think this is clear enough because it was a little confusing to me. The language here is on the ordinance, right at the bottom of page one and beginning of page two, but it's describing that when the clock starts on an application is when staff writes back to the applicant and says, your application is incomplete. That's the start of the clock. My question had been, what if you, then the applicant gives you some more material, and then you write to them again and say, well, that's great, but it's still incomplete, does the clock start again? And the answer was, yes, it does, which I think is totally logical. That's what I would expect. The clock will keep restarting as long as there's activity going on on the thing. So I'm just wondering if that's clear enough, the way it's written in there. My fellow council members, does anybody else wonder about that?
Well, before we, we're not asking council members. Ben, would you like to explain why you think that's complete or not complete?
Yes, the language there, what it allows for is, yes, if somebody makes a couple of changes, comes back and it's incomplete, they get to play that game. The typical situation is somebody goes away and doesn't respond at all. We do get certain circumstances where somebody would resubmit the same material. You see that at the end of the year, for example, where an architect is trying to impress a client, so they, oh, I resubmitted, and they haven't changed anything. So in that situation, if they haven't responded in what we believe is a response, we would say, no, you still, you know, you're now into this shot clock situation, or you're expiration. But generally speaking, yeah, it's, if somebody is going through that little process of every 30 days, we don't generally see that problem. If somebody is running into a snag where, for example, they need to get a survey or something that's, structural engineer that takes them additional, they'll let us know, and we'll figure that out and say, okay, you know, that potentially could take an additional 180 days or a year, whatever. So we don't see that provision causing a problem.
Thank you for that clarification. Did anybody else have any questions, just for staff?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Not done yet.
Oh, I thought you only had four.
Page four of the ordinance, the sequa section, which I don't normally read these very carefully, but for some reason I read this one, and I noticed it said PDD at the end of the fifth line. I wondered why it was about PDD regulations. I wondered if that was just a copy from something else that wasn't intentional.
I'm sure it was a typo, yes. It wouldn't be specific to PDD. So we could clarify that language.
Well, I think you need to correct it. Thank you for bringing that up. That looks like that was something from a different ordinance, the one we did on the PDD. So if you go about halfway down, it says, "will not have a significant effect on the environment because it will not allow for housing development at densities that exceed or was previously allowed in the PDD regulations." So look at section seven, sequa. About halfway down, there is, after the word environment, it says, "because it will not allow for housing development at densities that exceed what was previously allowed in the PDD regulations." So there appears to need to be something else put in there. Thank you, Bruce.
How about just taking out "in the PDD regulations"?
Well, it may be that there's something missing, so let's have our council take a look at that. I agree that that's one fix that we would make, but there may need to be something better. Okay, if we do the first reading, we would need to know what that change was. So we don't need to do it right this second. You can keep looking. Okay.
Okay. And then on typos there, I have one other typo, but it's not going to require any discussion. Do you want me to say it now?
Yeah, go ahead and say it.
Very, very end of page three of the ordinance, on the very last line, it says, "is hereby, is hereby," just take out one of the "is hereby's." That's it?
Okay, so at the bottom of page three, there's two "is hereby's" in the last. Well, Bruce, you have the eagle eyes.
So I actually thought this one would be a good one to kind of read through carefully because it's got a lot of little logical.
That's good. I read through carefully, usually I see these things.
And I thought, well.
Good. Okay, so you guys keep working on that. I'm going to open it up. Did you have a comment, a public comment? Okay, seeing none, bringing it back. We can start making deliberations while they're looking for how to change that section. So I get the sense that everybody's feeling pretty good about this. Did anyone want to make a comment? I think the work that's been done has really helped us.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank you, Ben, and also thank the Planning Commission for taking this on. It's somewhat tedious, but it'll, I think it'll help the process a lot and help staff out a lot. And Bruce, thanks, too, for really catching that with a fine eye towards detail.
So I think we're feeling good about this. One option that we could do, Garrett and Janet, is, I'm feeling good about this, and everybody's nodding, so one thing we could do is perhaps make a motion saying that we need to make the change in the sequa that's been pointed out, and insert correct language if needed, and then correct the typo on page three. May I ask the two of you who are busy working if that would work? Okay, why don't you read us what you have for the sequa?
Sure.
Let's read it.
Sure. So all it is, is we're deleting this one sentence that's in the middle that accidentally got added in there.
So why don't you read us what you want to delete?
So you're going to delete, it's in the third line down, and there's a comma, and it says, "and it can be seen with certainty that its adoption will not have..."
Where do we, where do we start deleting?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is, in the ordinance, it's...
No, I know where it is, but you need to tell us where you're starting to delete.
Yes. Go to the third line down.
Okay.
It's after the comma, in land use regulations, comma, and then you're going to delete, "and it can be seen with certainty that its adoption will not have a significant effect on the environment because it will not allow for housing development at densities that exceed what was previously allowed in the PDD regulations." You just delete that whole thing. It has nothing, yeah, what hap, oddly, we don't know what happened because the Planning Commission resolution had sequel in it, and it's just been the same thing, but I think for whatever reasons, it just popped a line in inadvertently.
Okay, so it would read, so where it says, "minor changes in land use regulations," and then go, and then, "and the proposed ordinance," no, it's not a period, it's comma, comma, "and the proposed ordinance does not constitute a project," et cetera.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So would somebody like to make a motion to move forward with this with the two changes, the one in the sequa and the one in section four? Bruce, do you want to go ahead?
I'm not sure if I need to read all of that. Should I, Janet, read? Okay.
You need to introduce number two.
All right, so I move that we introduce and read by title only the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, Adding Section 1702130, Time Limits Extensions for Design Review, 17032100, Time Limits Extensions for Conditional Use Permits, 17040100, Incomplete Discretionary Permit Applications, and 1704110, Permit Time Limit and Extensions, and Amending Section 17028090, Lapse Renewal Term for Variances, and 17060090, Time Limits Extensions for Ridgeline Development, and Consolidating and Revising Section 17072140 and 17072150, Expiration and Extension Respectively for the Hill Area Residential Development Overlay Zone." And as amended, which Garrett just read clearly, on the, on the section seven on sequa, removing that one phrase in there and correcting the "is hereby" repetition.
In section four. In section four.
Four of 17032100.
Okay, would somebody like to second that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. All right, so, so council reports and comments, I would say that we have those in the, we've already done those as, in written reports, and I'm hoping we don't have to do more at this point. And then ask if we have a town manager's report? Okay, any future agenda items? I'm not sure why we have this on here.
Just to allow you, if you wanted to talk about future agenda items as a group.
We did, we recently, last meeting.
Okay, well, all right, so that's been done. You weren't here. So with that, I'd like to move on to adjourn. We've got a very long list this time. Before I start with the list of names, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the victims of the Conception scuba ship fire, and in memory of, and I just want to say, the list of people in Fairfax and beyond who have touched Fairfax is really some amazing people who have really changed lives. In memory of Leland Jordan, George William Maloney, Michael Angelo Manheimer, Tony Starelli, and also Jack Mosher, who was recently in the obituaries, who was somebody pretty important in Fairfax as well.
Just today.
It was actually in a couple of days ago. It's been in for a few days. You've been away. So with that, I believe we are adjourned. Thank you all.